Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Mr. Adams, Clerk Adams, it is four o'clock. We're ready to begin.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good afternoon. This is the four P M. Work session for the January tenth meeting of the City of South Fulton City Council.
Awesome. Mr. Clerk, will you go ahead and call the roll first?
It's a roll call. The Honorable Captain F. Rau, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gons, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J. C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Linda Becerra Pritchett, District Seven.
Present.
And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
All right, Mr. You have a floor.
Thank you. Please sound the next item.
Next item is City Manager Presentations. First presentation is the Finance Monthly Report by Karen Slaton Dixon, Finance Director.
Okay, okay, if you get off. Um, I'd like to present to you the November two monthly, uh, financial report.
You sound a little muffled, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, let, let me see if I volume up. How about now?
That sounds a little better.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so I'd like to present the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two monthly, uh, financial report. Before we get to the, the next slide. And so on here, on our general fund summary of revenues, we show here where we've collected seventy-six percent of the, uh, projected property tax, um, as of the end of November. Um, looking at some other, uh, collections, we've collected one hundred and seventeen percent of other taxes, and then sixty-one percent in charges, uh, for services. And overall, we've collected about fifty-seven percent of the projected, uh, revenue. So we've, uh, collected fifty-eight million two seventy-three, um, thirty-two in revenue. Next slide. Okay. And on this slide, this is our summary of expenditures as of November thirtieth. Uh, we spent about seven percent of the budgeted funds. So we had a budget of one hundred and two million two three thousand four hundred and ten. And of that, we've actually spent six million six eighty-two twenty-seven in, um, expenditures. Next slide. And on here, we have our year-to-date tax revenues. Uh, we received, uh, forty-five million nine oh three ninety-nine in twenty-two taxes. So that's about ninety-three forty-eight percent of, uh, what was billed out by the county. And we received fifty-five thousand nine twenty-four in taxes from the West Side Tax and thirty-nine thousand three twenty-six from the East Side Tax in the month of November. Next slide. And on the, uh, general fund year-to-date local office sales tax, we're showing a collection of, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is about less than, uh, one percent over what was received in November twenty twenty-one in the F Y twenty-two budget. So for November, uh, we collected two million six seventy-one twenty-two in lost revenue. Next slide. Okay, and on here, we have our general fund year-to-date T-Slides, and we're showing a collection of four point three percent over this time in, um, F Y twenty-two. So the city has received one million seven ninety-seven one thirty-eight in the month of November. And then this slide here is just a summary of our expenditures, which gives us a view of, uh, what the departments have spent in a, um, bar chart format, uh, based on the expenditures that we saw that on Slide Three. Okay, and then this is a summary of our revenues and expenditures side of all the funds as of November, um, twenty twenty-two. So overall, the expenditures, seven million three sixty-three six eighty-five, and where the revenue, uh, was fifty-eight million four ninety-four six point zero. Next slide. And so here on, uh, this slide, this is our confiscated, um, assets. And right now, as of November, the bank show a balance of five oh four two twenty with two hundred and one thousand six ninety-three coming from cash that was confiscated, and nothing has been spent, um, year-to-date for the confiscated, um, asset funds. Next slide. So here's some, um, supplemental, um, information to provide updated on the, uh, A R P, um, funds. We, the city has spent a total of one million one fifteen, um, thousand of funds as of November thirtieth. And right now, that will be fifteen thousand dollars for the Food and Security Fund that was spent in twenty twenty-one. And they had ten, uh, ten thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, seventy-three cents that was spent for the Food and Security Fund in twenty twenty-two. Now, of course, we have one hundred thousand for the Vaccine Incentive Program, uh, five hundred thousand for Pay and Pay Incentive, and then five hundred thousand for Revenue Loss, which was a rent care budget adjustment in F Y twenty-two. And so this, we do have the R F P that was issued for the Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program, and that award was issued to Enser Advisory LLC to administer one million four hundred thousand of the Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program. And on my last report, I was asked to provide the Occupational License Collections. So for F Y twenty-one, the city actually, um, collected one million nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty, forty-two dollars, excuse me, and they had a budget of one million six hundred thousand. Uh, F Y twenty-two, the city collected two million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-two, and the budget was set at two million five hundred thousand. So, um, both years, the city was actually collecting more than was funded for occupational license. Um, false alarms. You can, uh, put on that, and year-to-date, the city has actually collected under forty.
I'm sorry, Mayor. In point of order, I can barely hear. I mean, I, I'm sorry, but I can't.
All right, I was just speaking with Mr. Hammond. Uh, Ms., uh, Dixon, it looks like you're it, the, the problem, the issue is on your end. I don't know, uh.
Uh, let, let me, let me stay here. Uh.
Are you, are you going through your, may I ask, are you going through your computer right now? Is that the audio that you're using?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, I threw my computer.
Oh, I, I wonder if you might be able to use the call-in number and call in from your landline and mute your sound on the computer, and maybe that will be a clearer channel.
Okay, all right, give, give me just, just a moment.
All right. Sorry for the de- technical difficulties, everyone. This is our last Zoom meeting, hopefully. So, uh, we'll be in person after this, but just give us one second.
Uh, give me just a moment. I have, um, I P. in here trying to get me plugged in, so give me just a moment.
Ms. Dixon, you sound a lot clearer just now.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna try it again here. Uh, can you hear me better now?
Much.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So do you want me to start over with the supplemental information or just keep moving?
If you could go back a slide or two, I think the one that, that is of utmost importance to our constituents was the, uh, the Rental Assistance Program. You could start there.
Okay, all right. So this is, I want to give an update on the A R P, uh, funds. And so just backing up a little bit here, we have the R F P that was issued for the Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program, and that B. was awarded to Enser Advisory LLC to administer the funds in the amount of one million four hundred, um, thousand. So that has been awarded, and I do believe the contract has been sent out, um, for that, um, a- as well. And then on the Occupational License Collection for F Y twenty-one, the city collected one million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and forty-two, and the budget was set at one million six hundred thousand. For F Y twenty-two, the city collected two million eight hundred and eighty-eight nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, and the budget for that year was actually two million five hundred thousand. And so both years, um, the budget was exceeded, uh, by collections. And then in the, um, false alarms, we, the city has actually collected one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. And then as far as the South Fulton Development Authority, there's nothing to report, um, on that, um, for November. And then also wanted to give an update on our contracts um, that the city has actually issued since the November, um, session. We have one for our show mobile stage that was issued to Winger Corporation for two hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that term will be from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two through October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And then we also, as I mentioned, the Rental Assistance, um, was awarded to Enser Advisor, Advisory, and so that amount was a hundred thousand dollars for their administration fee. And that contract is gonna run from January third, twenty twenty-three, um, to January the second, twenty twenty-four with a two-year, uh, renewal. And so I believe that ends my report for the November twenty-two, and I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, the queue is open, and I see in the queue Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. May. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you for your presentation, um, and I'm Finance Director. I do have one question, maybe just for my edification. The four percent collection on franchise fees. Um, i- is that just a matter of how those monies normally flow into the city, or is there, is there an issue there?
Yes, that, that is basically, yes, how the, the money flows into the, the city, because some of the, the, um, people that actually pay, they, some of them pay on a quarterly basis. So we may see some more come in, and then also, because this is November, and you're only looking at two months, and they actually have, um, until the twentieth of each month to get that franchise money in. But then, like I said, we do have some that pay by the, the quarter as well. So for the past quarter, which was October, November, and December, they'll have until the twentieth of this month to get those fees into the city.
Okay, so normally in, say, in month fours, when we would see some sense of anomaly in terms of the flow?
Yes, yes, we do. And then in, in, in February, we also, the city get a, um, a big check for franchise fees from Georgia Power, so that is normal, a good piece of money, so that will be, um, a big increase there.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. And maybe this is a question for the City Manager. Uh, I, I, maybe I missed it. Did I see anything go out about the Rental Assistance or the Small Business Assistance Program?
Yes, ma'am. Just today, our Public Affairs, um, Director, Interim Director, sent you all the information on the Rental and Mortgage Assistance, but we have yet to begin the small business, because we have to go through the same process that we did for the rental and mortgage. We have to do an R F P. We have to let it on the street, and then we have to get the proposals back. So that one, uh, Mr. Artie Jones and I have already spoken, uh, this year about, uh, the plans of getting that one, uh, implemented as soon as possible.
Okay, I, I'm looking in my inbox, and I haven't received anything. I mean, maybe, uh, when did that email go out?
Councilwoman Willis, I just got it about a minute before, uh, this meeting started, so I think it just went out.
The time that I see, Mayor, is two twenty-two, and the, the title of it is C D B G Rental, Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program. It was sent from Ms. Jackie Howe. And the time on my email is two twenty-two, and I do want to make sure that we specify, um, Ms. Slaton Dixon shared with you that, uh, we have the agreement for the A R P more portion of the Rental and Mortgage Assistance. We haven't started that one yet. The one that we've started is through the C D B G funding. That's the one that we will be managing and implementing in-house. So any, um, residents, we would encourage you to go to our website. All the information is laid out. The, the applications are on there as well. And of course, you know, because we're, um, using funds, um, we have to make sure that it, uh, but I did just want to highlight just a few things, and then I want to yield some of my time to, um, our Community Development Director, Derek Hole. It was a request of Councilmember, uh, Corey Reeves that he do a, um, presentation on the cottage homes. So I want to allow, uh, him and have an opportunity to share that information with you. Um, I do want to, uh, say thanks to our staff, our Director of Emergency Management, and our Fire Chief, and all staff that were involved. I don't want to begin to call any names, because I may miss it some people, but, uh, we did, uh, open up our warming station, uh, during the week of, uh, December the nineteenth through the twenty-first. Um, we had probably, uh, you know, less than ten people that were able to, uh, take advantage of the warming station, but we are very thankful that we were able to have that facility, um, available to those who are in need. Um, we also want to, uh, publicly thank those entities that assisted us with our water collection. Uh, we want to thank PepsiCo, Public, Kroger, Coca-Cola, World Changers International Church, Elizabeth Baptist Church, um, and also I believe Councilmember Sebastian, you assisted in purchasing water. And then, uh, Councilmembers, uh, Willis and, uh, Pritchett, and, uh, and, and Council, uh, Mayor Khalid, I believe you assisted as well. So, uh, we want to thank you. We do still have water available for those in need, so we ask that if you do need water as a result of the situation that happened, uh, with the pipes being broken, uh, that you please reach out to our Fire Department as soon as possible. Uh, we've already talked about the Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program. I was gonna hit up on that, but we again want to encourage those, uh, who, uh, are in need of rental and mortgage assistance to go to our website, W W W. cityofsouthfulton.g a dot g o v. Um, and we want to congratulate Langston Hughes Football Team for their state championship. There will be a celebration, um, and followed by a parade. Um, and we want to thank, um, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sebastian and his Legislative Specialist, and also Corinne Smoot for putting things together, along with any of the other staff that helped. Uh, so we're looking forward to celebrating, uh, the football team. Um, but we want to also let you know that, uh, on page three of our report, uh, we made, uh, you all aware that there was a, uh, damage as a result of the freezing temperatures, water damage to Wolf Creek. Um, some of the underground pipes along the sidewalk burst, and there was flooding um, in the Plaza Restrooms and flooding of one of our skyboxes. And we are working with, um, Germa, um, our insurance, uh, broker, to, uh, have a, a vendor come out and look at the repairs and do a site assessment to assist us in determining, uh, how we need to move forward with that. So our Deputy Director of General Services, uh, Martha Anderson, uh, will be assisting in this process. Um, just for the benefit of the public, we are moving forward. We're trying to get our R F P put out for Wolf Creek. Um, the R F P will be listed on our website. However, we are still doing some final reviews, uh, by, um, various departments within the city, because we want to make sure that R F P, um, has everything in it. And I believe a few meetings ago, I did go over where you can find, uh, the R F Ps for the city. Um, it's on our main homepage, and you just need to click on the tab that says Bids and Solicitations. Um, the other information that I wanted to share, we want to, uh, thank our Public Works Department and all those that were involved with helping us to get the grand opening for our Butler Stonewall Tale Dual Roundabout. Um, that actually happened on yesterday, Monday, January the ninth at ten o'clock. And so we are so excited to have, uh, this new intersection to assist with the flow of traffic, um, in our city. And I did share with the council, too, um, a list of our boards and commissions, and currently where some of them meet, um, and some of them are still meeting virtually. And as the mayor mentioned, um, I, I would like to, uh, take, ask the council to consider, uh, the recommendation that we go back into in-person meetings starting in February for specifically our work session. Um, I know that, uh, the council still may want to do the, the ordinance, um, just as a fallback in case we have to do a virtual meeting, but, uh, we have reserved Welcome All Park, uh, for, uh, the, uh, year twenty twenty-three to, as the location for our, uh, work sessions beginning next month in February. And, um, that, I think that's all I wanted to hit upon. Again, I want to give Mr. Derek Hole an opportunity to present on the, um, the cottage homes. But if you want to ask questions now, Mayor, I'd be glad to take any, based upon the information that was presented to you, uh, in my report dated January sixth.
All right, uh, do we have any questions? I see Councilwoman Willis's hand raised.
Thank you for recognizing me, uh, Mayor. Um, thank you for that, our report, Miss Sally Jones. Um, Miss Sally Jones, um, I'm saying this with all the love and respect. We were told in December in your last management report that R F P for Wolf Creek would be on the street as of December. We are now approaching, well, we're in January, approaching February. Concert season typically starts in April. We no longer can continue to delay this. And so I am qu- requesting for a specific date that we can get this R F P on the street, and I hope it is by the end of this week. We also need, um, by the next council meeting, an operation plan. And we also need to know when we, that we were given a presentation on bringing the facility up to par. So now, not in addition to the pipes that were burst, we need to know when are we gonna get the other, the additional, uh, repairs done to the facility so that we will be ready for concert season. I, for one, uh, don't want to be attacked and continue to be attacked by residents about this facility that is sitting in our city dormant for the past, what, two or three years? And, you know, we gotta get concerts going. We gotta give our residents what they want. I'm, I mean, I'm sorry if I'm sounding impatient, but when residents are unhappy, they don't come to you. They don't go to your staff like they should that handle those daily operations. We have to deal with all of this mess. And we have to listen to all this chatter. And then what other cities have their concerts is, Mableton is controlled by, uh, COF. They're not controlled by Mableton, the city of Mableton, but Stockbridge is. And then Atlanta have various, they, it's, you know, when they have all these robust concerts, then we get looked to at the City of South Fulton as if while we're not getting, while we're not having concerts like we used to. And I, I'm, I'm, it's really, it's, it's wearing me down. And I can't provide answers that staff has not provided to me. We're constantly being told every council meeting that the R F P is going on the street. The R F P is going on the street. This is not on the county at this point, because the county has turned over the facility. The county has given us the necessary go-ahead and green light to run the facility. What is the problem?
It's, is that a question to me, Councilmember Willis, or is that a statement?
It's a question, and also, I'm asking that we have this R F P on the street by, by the end of this week, because y'all have been working on this, y'all staff, you, your office, been working on this for the past, I don't know how many months now, and it's getting, this is getting ridiculous. And, and then three, we need a plan on how it's gonna be operated, not just how the concerts are gonna be produced. How is it gonna be operated? Security, tickets, all of that stuff. And then we need a plan on, you know, we need an update, not a plan, because you gave us a plan on the facilities being brought up to par. We need an update on where we are bringing these facilities up to par, with this facility up to par.
Councilmember Willis, I cannot promise you that I will have an R F P out on the street by Friday. Now, you, the staff, we are doing our very best. We want this R F P to be done in decent and in order. Um, we have, you know, we are working with our risk manager. We're working with legal. We're working with procurement. We want to make sure that we have all the information included in the R F P, so we won't have to make a whole lot of amendments, because when you rush to do an R F P, you're gonna have amendments and questions that we probably could have addressed if we had taken our time and done it right. The only thing that I can tell you as your city manager is that I will do my very best to get it out as fast as I can, but I cannot promise you it will be out by Friday.
Okay, well, I understand that, but, Miss Sally Jones, I'm gonna go on record. And, and, and just like I can, constituents can go back, look at these council meetings where you have promised, well, not promised, you have stated the R F P was gonna be on the street. The R F P is gonna be in the street. Now we're in January, January tenth to be exactly. And the R F P is still not ready to go on the street, and we've been working on this R F P. We, the staff, have been working on this R F P now. I know for a fact, because I've been had, because Councilmember Gons have had meetings, we have had questions, we've gone to other cities, asked for best practices. This R F P has been in progress, I know, for at least three months. And I'm just gonna say that's minimal. It's probably been in progress longer than that, but I know for a fact it has been in progress for at least three months. And it should not take that long. I hear what you're saying and I agree with you. I don't want mistakes. I don't want amendments either. I want transparency. That's why ordinance is coming for when RFPs are released, we are notified on this council so we can govern ourselves accordingly and so we can make sure everything is transparent. But I know minimally, this RFP has been in progress for at least three months. And it should not take that long to get an RFP done. It shouldn't. So I'm going on record to say, you know, if you can't get it done by the end of this, by the end of this week, I'm asking you if you can get us a specific timeframe that this is going to be released, at least this month.
All right, Councilwoman Willis.
I got one, I got one more question, Mayor, if you don't mind, or do you, would you like to come back to me?
I'll come back to you because, because, because we are. And I, and I will just, just ask a couple of quick things as a, as a follow-up. Madam City Manager, our February work session is actually on Valentine's Day? I'm sure that's, so, so would it be possible to have a, a work session around, have this be a work session topic?
We can have a work session topic, yes.
Well, Mayor, I just want to say that we'll delay the, the RFP until February. And I'm, I'm waiting until you come, I'm waiting till you come back, but I do have a few more questions about, not about this, but something else. Thank you.
Yes, and I, and I understand this is, and I, and I'm not, I didn't mean to suggest that to the, you know, if you get the RFP done before the fourteen, that's fine. But I do think that, you know, I just want to just put it out there that maybe we could go through some of these things. My, you, you know, my understanding, just as a, as a former performer and friends with performers, is that this might, that Wolf Creek might require multiple RFPs that, that, that sometimes booking and promotions is handled separately from concessions, is handled separately from parking and security, is, is handled separately from the technical direction, the lighting and design, and that those things may be all handled separately from the ticketing. So there, there could be multiple RFPs. I do, I, there's only maybe one or two vendors that can really handle all of those things. And I, and I don't even think the biggest vendors like a, a Live Nation would handle parking and security or the concessions. So I just wanted to ask, have you considered, Madam City Manager, that there might be a, a multiple different RFPs that you would need for Wolf Creek?
Yes, if necessary, we would have multiple RFPs.
All right, and I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's a topic for another time, but it's, it's something to consider that maybe one person can handle everything, although, but also maybe by breaking it up, we have a chance for more of our local vendors to do, you know, some piece of that. All right, I see in the queue, Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Madam Jones, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Our best day of my life. I have a, a couple of questions. Have a RFP went out for the facilities upgrades and repairs that went to Wolf Creek?
Not yet. We, again, as I mentioned, we were working with Germa and we're using a company called Parker and Young to do an assessment. They are Germa's preferred vendor. And so once they do that, then I guess it will, the next steps will be, you know, what the assessment will turn out to be. And then, you know, I don't, I don't know these kind of things, but I'm assuming if there's a specific vendor that needs to do specific work out there, then we would go through the process.
That has to take place before we can put our RFP out for anybody to use that facility, correct?
I don't think we could still do it simultaneously, but knowing that we are going to have to have some repairs done that were, of course, out of our control as a result of the freezing temperatures.
Correct. So are we currently paying, because it was reported the last time, eight thousand dollars to make for a property maintenance? Are we still currently paying that amount per month?
Eight thousand dollars for property maintenance?
It was reported that we were spending eight thousand dollars on maintenance of Wolf Creek Amphitheater.
Let me take a note down and let me get with our facilities, Deputy Facilities Director, and I will follow it with you because I'm, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. I did see in the queue, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Miss Sally Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, in, in other conversations that I've had with Councilwoman Willis this week, she made the point about an issue that there are five hundred and thirty-eight cities in the state of Georgia. And obviously, there are thousands upon thousands of cities around the country. So we are not the only city that would be operating an entertainment venue of some sort. So given that there are tens of thousands of cities around the country who certainly have put out RFPs for similar services and that we don't have to start from scratch in trying to do an RFP, could you help me understand what the barriers have been to getting this done? And why this continues to drag on month after month after month? Because we are on the verge of losing yet another concert season. And the reality is, once, once people kind of get used to going to certain places for certain things, it's going to become increasingly difficult to bring them back to Wolf Creek. So what, what, what is the problem that we can't get this done?
Well, as you mentioned, you know, in government, we don't reinvent the wheel. We use other RFPs from other cities. So we've done that. However, you still have to make it specific to your organization. So one of the things that we have been trying to work on, which my staff person, Special Projects Manager Corinne and I were just talking today, we need to pull together our team because we need to determine the insurance, the, the proper amount of insurance that we need to require for the proposers. That, that's just one of the things that I can think of at this point.
And then, why, but why does that take months upon months? Like, we can't, we can't look to other cities to see what coverage levels they have to determine what would be appropriate for a city and a venue of our size? I mean, it just seems to me that there's enough information out there that it should not take years to get one thing done.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, but, and I will say, one of the, one of the challenges, Councilmember Williams, is that we currently don't have a purchasing manager. So we're, you know, depending on our purchasing analyst who has been done, doing a really good job to assist us in doing work that really the manager over procurement should be doing. So we've, we've had some challenges there. You know, that, that's the only, you know, we're, we're trying to be as specific as we can in addressing all the, the requirements that we need to have for an RFP. I don't have any other explanation for you. I'm just being honest.
I see. So, just so I'm clear, despite the fact that there's a wealth of information from tens of thousands of cities that we can pull from, so we don't have to start from scratch and despite the fact that promises have been repeatedly made to get this done and it's not getting done.
And I haven't made any promises. I hope you're not referring to me because I haven't made any promises to any of you. I, I know that.
Well, I mean, but, you know, if you, if you've been saying in council meetings that it's going to be on the street, it's going to be on the street, it's going to be on the street, and it's not happening, that's tantamount to promising that this is going to get done. So, yeah, I, I feel like I am hearing a lot of excuses. And I'm not familiar, I don't know if you are familiar with what excuses are. But I feel like I'm hearing a lot of excuses and kicking the can down the road rather than a commitment to get this done.
And you have my commitment to get it done. I cannot give you a specific date. I cannot tell you that it will be done by Friday. But what I can tell you is that we are making every effort in good faith, and I want to stress, in good faith, to get this RFP out on the street. And I hope that this council, instead of condemning me, will be supportive. We are not trying to give you excuses. We are trying to deliberately and intentionally try to get this RFP done and trying to make sure that it is a very good RFP so we won't have to keep going back and making amendments to it and making changes to it and being rushed to do it. I would hope that you guys would want us to take the time that we need to get it done right. But I assure you, as soon as we get it done, we will, as soon as legal reviews it, I think they need about, you know, three to five days to get it done, we will have the RFP out on the street. One of the requirements is that we want to have mandatory site visits for all those, you know, individuals who are, are interested in submitting a proposal because we want them to see specifically, you know, what they're going to be working with.
Okay, I'm going to just interject here because we're, we're running a little short on time. We have some other presentations. Madam City Manager, we're, we're going to trust that you get this completed. I, I, I will know that, I know that we're also doing an RFP around Juneteenth. And I think that, you know, that's just one event. But I think that the process of going through that RFP and, and, and finding performers, figuring out ticketing, figuring out parking and security and all those things that I just previously discussed, I think going through that one event will be very educational for all of us on how this works. And I would also just remind council, I think that we, we have seen just from our sanitation RFP, you know, we selected, that took much longer than we, we expected. We selected someone and we're still working on finalizing the contract months after the selection. So I, I, I do agree, City Manager, that we, that we want to do this with, with extreme caution and make sure that we, we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's as we learn on these other processes. Councilwoman Willis.
Hey, Mayor, can I, can I, pardon me, can I please respond to the Juneteenth RFP? You know, the, 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 the council formed the new department called Department of Public Affairs and Special Projects. And one of the responsibilities of that department is citywide special events. So instead of using an RFP process, we will be using our internal staff to plan and implement our Juneteenth event for this year.
All right, thank you for that correction. I, I, I still stand by the, the, the idea that I think just planning that event will, will give you all a lot of information about what needs to be included in an RFP. If it's all right, I would like to just go ahead and move to the Public Works update.
No, it is not all right because I asked.
No, it's not.
Okay, so it's not all right. I see in the queue, Councilwoman Willis.
I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You interrupted me. I was not done.
Councilwoman Williams, my apologies.
You know what? I will, I will yell. Never mind. I'll yell to Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis.
Miss Sally Jones, I, I apologize that you feel that we were condemning you. I, 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 I am, just want to let you understand that no one is condemning you. But when this council is being told month after month, month after month, that RFP is being worked on and it's going to be released soon and soon yields us three and four months later, and then we're constantly getting attacked by residents. And then our point of escalation is you, the city manager, I just wish you, I just hope that you would take that into consideration because we're the ones that's really getting condemned because this, this community wants concerts back in their community. And we don't want to go another year without concerts. And as Councilmember Williams just stated to you, we're in jeopardy of doing that because here we are in February and we're being told, we don't even know when the RFP is going on the street. We don't even have a plan for operations and we don't even have, we don't even have any updates on when the facility is going to be brought up to par when we were given this plan approximately four or five months ago. So it's not condemning you. We are commanding and we're demanding some, some, some hard deadlines and dates because that's what's being demanded and commanded of us as the leadership of the city. And then I also want to make a point that there's a difference between RFP and contracts. The RFP is a solicitation. Once the RFP, once somebody is awarded the RFP, then that's when you finalize the contract. So please don't mingle the two. I also want to, I'm not going to prolong this any longer, but I really do need hard contacts and updates on the Welcome All Pool Rule. I need, I need hard contacts, I mean, hard milestones because people want our pool open by the summer. I also need hard milestones and completion deadlines on the light installation. I'm just being told February. Where are we? When is, when are they going to start installing the lights? Where are the updates? I'm getting nothing, but I'm constantly getting beat up on. And I'm just going to stop right there because there's so much, Miss Sally Jones, that I really choose not to put out in the public. But I have, I, I do talk to you privately. But when it comes to a point where residents are beating us up, there are certain things that got to be put on the record because people think we're not investing in our parks. They're thinking that we, we, our parks are going to the dogs. When I have, I get, I get probably the most investment in my park facilities in my district because I have the largest facilities. When people think we, our parks are garbage because they have no clue of what we're doing and they have no clue of how, and I can't give them anything that I'm not getting, and that is updates. Thank you. I yield.
Dr. Rowe?
Okay. I think it goes without saying that there's been a lot of discussion that I don't want to necessarily rehash on that. But, you know, I do appreciate the report we just got from Public Works to kind of hone in on some of these projects. I think it might be worth having, as you noted, a work session specifically on that. There is a lot in that Public Works report and there's a lot of questions around the amphitheater. I do get questions from the public and I think it would be helpful. And it might be in the city managers, um, Ms. Sally Jones, for you to consider if uh, there's a lack of in-house capacity to deal with the procurement. To do, you know, it's in your ability to hire somebody up to twenty-five thousand to get these procurements done, then that's worth looking into, to me. Um.
Okay.
You know, I know some of the challenges we have faced that were pointed out on a report about how people are bidding or not bidding on these RFPs when they're on the street. So you know, I don't know what it may, maybe it needs to be a special call meeting just to deal with this because we are about to hit February and I think we're gonna be more challenged with book and talent. Whoever, whoever gets it. So, um, and I, I just, everybody, I know it's a lot of emotion, but I think if we could try to be um cognizant of how we talk to each other. Um, it's a lot and, and, and we all get all the questions. I understand that, but um, a lot of things were highlighted in that report.
Nobody was disrespectful. No one.
Um, thank you, Dr. Rowe, and, and everyone for this, this conversation. Uh, Mister, could we go, could we, uh, I'm sorry, before we go to Public Works, I think that you did have a presentation from Mr. Hull.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. Derek Hull, reporting on behalf of the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. Uh, the item before you is um, a request to uh, have a general discussion related to the concept of cottage homes. Um, some of you may not be aware, um, as a part of my background, I've spent um, some years working on the private sector side with KB Home, one of the nation's largest home builders. Then on the public sector side, I've worked a great deal extensively um, in looking at affordable housing. Um, particularly those programs that are administered uh, through housing and urban development. So I was, I was elated, excited to research the topic of cottage homes uh, and uh, have just uh, really understood the passion of uh, Councilmember Reeves and his attempt to bring about a robust discussion regarding this concept. So let's just uh, get into this presentation. It's, it's brief and um, I'll try to keep my comments minimum, uh, but certainly um, we'll provide some additional information as it relates to this topic. Uh, and, and of course, Mayor Council, this is not a foreign topic to you. You've had discussions before related to cottage homes here in the city. Uh, but what uh, the staff and I did is we conducted some research just to generally kind of understand the concept. Um, and just from an introduction perspective, the cottage home concept addresses environmental sustainability. As you know, um, oftentimes communities of color um, are not on the forefront of addressing environmental issues, sustainability, um, and more specifically housing affordability. Uh, and so, you know, kind of looking at the true definition of cottage homes, it addresses both, you know, environmentally sustainable housing that is also affordable. This concept uh, is of course innovative um, and the style of development based upon the idea of um, better, not bigger. Um, so, you know, where there was one point in my life where I may have wanted to own a house as large as some of you all's houses. Um, I really am thinking more about how to um, balance my life. And so you know, not wanting to have a three thousand square foot house, but certainly having a house that can accommodate my family and my friends uh, and others um, at points where I want to gather, I think is, is more where I am. And you might feel the same way and others might feel the same way. This cottage house concept looks at that um, and focuses less on size, but looks more at the quality of housing that is being proposed. And then finally, uh, useful options for developers fitting in between what is traditionally a detached, single-family house um, con- concept. Uh, but then also similar to that of condo, condos and townhomes. Meaning that you're placing these cottage homes closer in proximity. Uh, but making sure that um, we are still able to uh, have our individual space, um, and again, uh, predicated on the issues of affordability and more energy efficient. Next slide. So, the definition kind of goes back to something that we probably all have heard. Uh, the, the cottage, you know, by definition is considered a cozy type of house, meaning very small, very intimate. These were traditionally used to house people from agricultural communities. So you know, in areas in the south, um, on the west where there are migrant workers, oftentimes there are smaller cottage homes that are on these farms that allowed for these workers to live on the actual farm. Um, and so the name is derived, small dwelling place for the peasants, also known as cotters. Hence the name cottage homes. These particular houses are typically asymmetrical, one, one and a half story dwelling units with low pitch gable roofs and small covered porches. You know, one of the elements that, two elements uh, architecturally from a cottage home perspective is to kind of have these um, these high ceilings um, and, and the structures, but then also utilize the outdoor space so that you can have a communal area, particularly related to the proximity of these houses uh, in such um in smaller lots, but trying to uh, have multiple houses um, on these, you know, on, on small areas. Uh, and then finally, um, sometimes these cottages are referred to as bungalows. Um, and you know, referred to as small houses uh, used to denote the countryside dwelling aspect of living. Um, now, individually, we've talked about cottage homes, but then there is this concept of cottage home development. And as I'm going through this brief presentation, you'll see images of some cottage homes that are very near the city of South Fulton that we have photographed uh, just so that we can show and, and highlight uh, for this presentation. So this collection of cottage homes um, is known as cottage home development. They're typically um housing developments that are one thousand square feet or less. Uh, they're arranged around a common open space or courtyard, um, and the parking is off to the side. So most of these units, all of these units typically don't have um, single car garage or double carriages, obviously. But there is a shared parking area where car vehicles are parked. Um, and the focus is more on this communal living with this individual space. Uh, the footprint is, is small and sustainable. Um, and you know, the goal is just to maximize as much density. Um, and sometimes what is considered to be smaller lots. So in terms of differences of understanding cottage homes versus conventional housing, you know, um, typically there is this double underlining zoning density for cottage houses uh, that you don't have in conventional. Um, the orientation um, of units um, typically face a common space area. But because the footprint of the house is smaller, you can have various orientations of your house that do not compromise the area. Uh, we mentioned the floor space typically no more than a thousand square feet. Um, small and compact, yet still fully equipped to have all of the amenities and all of the features of a typical sized house. Uh, and then um, many of them can sit, they have what we consider to have two stories. So they have living spaces, um, and, and in some cases they'll have one and two bedrooms. A lot of them oftentimes will have ample outdoor space. Some of the ones that we recently visited in College Park and East Point, I believe, or College Park, I can't remember which one. Um. They had expansive outdoor decks. Not only um, on the first floor, but also on the second floor. That was the entire um, length of the, of the cottage. So in terms of benefits, um, you know, obviously this compact type of residential dwelling promotes the efficient use of land. Um, most of these houses are more cost effective to build and they can retain um, the strategy of scaling a house's size and amenities. Uh, typically they're easily to adapt to more energy efficient types of um, um technology and recommendations than larger houses. The costs obviously are a lot more contained. Um, we mentioned the affordability aspect. Um, but in terms of the construction, um, the, the construction is oftentimes simple. The ones that we visited were actually being built right on site. And so they can still feature and include some customized um aspects of it, amenities to make the house feel like um, it is uh, accommodating all of your, your wants and your wishes. On the flip side, some of the challenges include, on a per square foot basis, cottage homes are typically more expensive to build than larger homes. That's on a per square basis. Um, but because it is a smaller footprint, it averages out where it's much more affordable than building uh, larger homes. Costs for fixtures and furnishings, um, particularly for kitchen and bathrooms are either the same as conventional housing or maybe in some cases, um, a little bit more. Um, but then the biggest challenge, I think, and you know, as our research shows, is the perception of cottage homes. People think that if you're building this and, and near traditional subdivisions across municipalities, that they will decrease property value. Well, we know um, as homeowners and people who've owned property, that property values are to a great degree determined by comparables. So if you're living in a five thousand square foot house and you happen to have a cottage home development near your house or near your subdivision, where the houses are averaging three to five thousand square feet. Um, a cottage house would not be considered a comparable because they're, they're different sides to um, to, they're different um considerations related to exactly, you know, what we determine the value of houses are. And so the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms and the like. And then finally, you know, just the, 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 this perception of using inferior, uh, inferior materials for construction uh, and then not being fully equipped. These are some of the additional um perceptions that exist out there. Um, I've listed here, I won't go into detail, two case studies that the staff had noted. These are in um Washington, um, near Seattle, where as you can imagine, the cost of, of housing is extremely expensive. But they have put in place some ordinances that really deal with uh, mandating for affordability purposes, uh, this whole cottage home concept. Um, and I can share this presentation if you want to have specific details on this. Um, this illustration just shows kind of a, a typical site plan of a cottage home development. Notice that in the middle is a common space area and the um, cottages look out onto the area and then there's shared parking as was discussed. One other thing of note is they, they use a lot of usable space related to uh, the pitch roofs as we discussed. So as I conclude, I wanted to, you know, with all of these presentations and again, I want to thank um, Councilmember Reeves for allowing staff to do a little bit of research, a little bit of creativity and putting together this presentation. But I wanted to just discuss the next steps for um, the council and the city to consider. Um, so Councilmember Reeves is going to host a cottage home community forum that's scheduled for January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. I believe it starts at six P M. He can provide the specific location. Um, and then after that tool, after that uh, forum, um, he and his team will schedule a tour for any of the residents that want to tour the facility. This developer, by the way, will be at that forum and will have additional posters and information on the existing development that he is doing. Um, and then, you know, as staff, we will look to uh, look around the city and look to see where there are areas that could support cottage home developments. Um, and in a report, a final report, we will include those recommendations um, and just uh, just some best practices. Um, and then, uh, and then provide a report to city council for their consideration. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and available if you have any questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hull, and thank you so much for your service to our city. Um, but before we go into questions, I, I just want to say this, um. I'm trying really hard to be uh, amenable to everyone's requests and to cooperate with our council. But I must say, this is not an item for the city manager's report. This is an entirely separate presentation. And I think that we've done a disservice to our presenters who were supposed to begin at four forty and to our public because this isn't explicitly listed amongst presentations on our agenda. So I am going to request, Madam City Manager, that when we have presentations like this, that they be presented in the presentations portion meeting and that the city manager's report just sticks to the updates from city departments. Um, that we have. We've already heard the presentation, so I'm gonna allow a few questions. But we still need to get through our public works report. Our um, initiatives align with the strategic plan and our thing on contracts and purchases. Uh, you know, our upcoming council meeting. So I'm just going to please ask you and all of my colleagues, if we have separate presentations that are just far and away different from our city manager's report, that we, that we handle those separately. Mayor Proten, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging. Uh, I just want to say thank you for that presentation, Mr. Hull. I appreciate it. Uh, sorry if it went against the um presentations in that manner, but um, we will do better going forward, at least from my administration. Uh, so thank you for that, um, that vice mayor. So I will know next time. But however, uh, thank you for the presentation and we'll just move forward. I'm just, uh, I'm done with questions.
All right, Councilwoman Willis.
Uh, yes, and uh, Mayor, uh, uh, my colleague just suggested that we should be careful on how we deal with each other and I don't really think you are disrespectful, but I do think that um, you might want to go back and review the uh, work session ordinance because um, the city manager, there's a difference between the city manager's report and then what the city manager wants to place on the agenda. And in this case, she did nothing wrong. Uh, Mr. Hull reports up to her. And um, she, she put this on the agenda as a presentation that is going to be presented by one of her uh, department heads. So uh, I think it's a matter of interpretation, but that is the intent of the ordinance, work session ordinance. Ms. Sally Jones does have the right to bring forth presentations and allow her department heads to bring forth presentations. With that being said, uh, Mr. Hull, uh, will you please advise if this current cottage home concept is in our current ordinance?
Uh, um, Councilwoman Willis, that's a good question. We have, as you know, our code can sometimes be a little complicated and sometimes contradictory. We do not have the cottage home concept um, in our ordinance. And so as a part of the report, there would be some recommendations on if this is what the city desires to do, there would be. what the city desires to do, there would be recommendations to amend the ordinance to allow for this type of use.
So to allow for this type of use, would it be possible for this type of use to be put in certain areas of the city? For example, if as we go through this and and hear in the presentation and we get community feedback, because I'm all about community feedback. Historically, the community in some areas of the city have not been receptive uh to this type of concept um in their communities for, for various reasons. Um, and uh, so with that being said, if we have an area in the city that's not receptive to this concept, would it be possible or legal for us when we do this ordinance that we are specific in nature on where this type of concept will be allowed in the city?
Yes, ma'am, and that's the beauty of going through a site analysis. A, you know, understanding first the landscape of the city of South Fulton and understanding where this type of product, housing product, can be viable um and can be welcome. And um, we can then make recommendations. And there are different ways to do it. We could include a cottage home overlay district that identifies certain geographic criteria and characteristics. And maybe this is, these are the areas where this type of uh product can be introduced and constructed. We can um, you know, look at the needs of housing affordability. Later in the year, the city will be engaged by requirement um to prepare our analysis of impediments to fair housing. So we will talk about housing affordability as a part of that report. And in that report, we can identify again, you know, where the viability of having these types of developments can be. Um, this is not going to be appropriate in every area of the city just because of the sheer characteristics of some of the existing communities. But there are viable areas where we can and we just need to go and do an assessment and determine where they are and where they can be.
Okay, and I just would like to um go on the record to say, you know, um, I think that we should weigh heavily on um residents, on what they feel and what they want. Some residents are receptive to this in their community. I can tell you now, some residents are not. And I, I want this to be a win-win for residents and whoever the builder is that's trying to bring this concept to our city. So the last thing we want to do is put the zoning concept in an area where residents are not receptive to it. Because all it's going to do is cause a lot of divisiveness when the zoning process uh initiates or when the developer tries to bring the concept to whatever community is known for. So as we go down this path, I just, you know, I know that you are leaving and you won't be here when we probably go down this path to uh, uh redo the ordinance uh to include this concept. But I just want to make sure that we are very intentional and we put it where residents are receptive to it. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, um, can we move to the Public Works monthly update?
Yes, sir. Next is the Public Works monthly update. Uh, will be presented by Mr. Antonio Valenzuela, Director, Department of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, City Manager and Residence of the City of South Fulton. Uh, it is my pleasure uh here, Antonio Valenzuela, Public Works Director, uh, to report back to you what Public Works has done to the month of December. Uh, before I start with the uh, with some of the highlights that I have on the monthly report, I would like to surely uh appreciate all my respect and and support to all the employees of Public Works who work on the evening of uh Christmas Day, the evening of Christmas and Christmas Day, clearing trees and others and in the early mornings of during Christmas, during dinner and so on. I surely want to uh applaud all my employees as we are not the first responders, but we are essential employees. And uh, as you can see, when those days have been on temperatures below uh thirty degrees at five degrees, eight degrees during those days, we have a full hand of employees working uh to ensure that our roads are clear and our residents are safer. Uh, with that said, uh, what this report has for you uh split in two sections that uh provides you uh more detailed information regarding uh capital agreement projects, T plus one and other projects that are related to Georgia DOT and other uh entities such as the Fulton C I D. Uh, section two provides an update to uh key areas such as roadway maintenance, uh, floodways, illegal dumping, animal uh pickup and others. Um, a few key points to uh bringing back to your attention is that if you look at our two weeks of roadway maintenance, uh, we have our contractor, contractor monitoring uh those roads and ensuring that they start uh in a specific day of the week and they have the entire week to finalize scheduled roads to be maintained during that week. If it's raining, there will be no maintenance uh and so on, but they do have um through the weekend to finalize that uh, that particular area that's scheduled for that week. So on the report, you can see uh areas before and after. Unfortunately, sometimes the roads have been maintained and a couple of days after we got different issues. Uh, with regards to our most relevant projects, uh, as uh, you've seen it yesterday, uh, one more project delivered to the City of South Fulton. I believe it was done under uh open traffic conditions, which was not very e- easy to be handled. We had different residents uh that we had to handle with, but in the meantime, I have received numerous uh, um emails, um providing us value uh for our residents and applauding the type of quality of project that we brought to the city. Well, with that said, um, I also want to mention to you that you will see more projects coming in from, from Public Works. And the full idea behind what projects are coming in front is to bring projects that are shovel ready. So in the past, we have a number of projects that were an advanced on design, advanced right work session. And those are the projects that we ensure that are coming in front because they were almost ready, ready to go, as well as current projects that are at different stages. Some projects are easier than others. Other projects uh are not necessarily difficult to design, but are difficult to acquire the right way. And that's why we, uh, it's our main uh hu- hurdle that we have to deal with every, every day. As well as, you can imagine that the number of projects that we came in from all corners are in the procurement phase. And we are actually bombarding our procurement office uh with a good, good number of projects and doing everything we can, working with them to ensure that the projects are are going into I T B so we can go back to uh as quickly as possible, make recommendations for, for council approval and then us going to uh to construction. A few, a few projects that are almost ready to go uh will be the White Mill Full Debt Reclamation. We are waiting uh on a fully executed contract and a fully purchase order and we are looking to schedule uh notice proceed and a kickoff meeting with the vendor in the next couple of weeks. We're doing the same thing with Campbellton Road at Stone Water, the road realignment, uh, will most likely upon the schedule on uh those kickoff meetings, we will have some um uh, uh groundbreaking for those, both projects. The other projects that are going into the, the I T B status uh um will be uh, uh, we, we had the Butler Road over Camp Creek, Butler Road, Camp Creek, Inner Road, Camp Creek, uh, Butler Union, Fe- February Road Phase Two, Cockon Road over Deep Creek. Those are, those projects are coming into the I T B status. And the next projects that uh we have accomplished uh on the uh uh past December, I would like to mention that uh, uh, General DOT has led to advertising the project on, on the bridge of Oakley Road over Burnet Creek on December sixteen. It's a project that's on District Seven, I believe. Um, with that, in, in short, uh, that is uh the summary of the report. Uh, I would like to also include that the Danforth Road South Walks is should be on the January twenty-four council meeting for your approval. Those are the most relevant projects that I have for Public Works. And at this point, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela, for your presentation. I see in the queue, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Mr. Valenzuela, can you give us, if there are any further updates on the um, the roundabout of Riverton Road and and Cedar Grove Road and anything that you have on the traffic study that we did on Cedar Grove Road, please?
So, uh, the roundabout, let me look exactly uh where is projected on the report that you have it, if we can look at uh about mid, middle of the page where we have the status of the uh Riverton. Uh, let me look at this stuff.
I know it was ninety-five percent completed and
Yeah.
back in December.
Uh, yes.
Just want to know if we moved forward to that because I think there was one um, one piece of parcel left to acquire, I believe, back then.
Uh, yes.
See, I just wanted to know if we moved, it moved anything forward, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's right there. Uh, it's actually ready to be led to, to construction, so we're looking at hoping that by the end of the month or earlier, we can put that project for an I T B.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Uh, Mr. Valenzuela.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way, uh, there's been a lot of talk about Wolf Creek and um and facilities falls under Public Works. Is there any way that we can get a complete list of an assessment of all the facilities that we do own in their current state or where they are and uh where they need to be?
The, the assessments uh for all the facilities we have completed, uh, we have a report and that's how we, we've done uh the uh U R A, U R A projects. Uh, however, um, for the Wolf Creek, we've done it a separate uh assessment. But as you can see, I'm just going to be honest with you. The Wolf Creek myself and most of our facilities that we have are not in the best shape that, that we wish they will be at. So it's a lot of work that will be required. There's a lot of specialties, a lot of main hours that will be required. And uh, we had discussed that with uh upper management and that we should be looking into additional support to ensure that all those facilities are, are served properly.
Correct. And so all those were done in the U R A and the ones we do own. And has that, that all been completed except for how many?
So we've, we've done investments after, no, the assessments are done for all, for all the facilities besides the Wolf Creek that I don't have the full version on the Wolf Creek. You know, we just got the Wolf Creek a few months ago. And uh, but the uh, besides the assessments, what I referred to U R A was the improvements or the needs that were done uh uh that, that were based on the assessments done on the past for our facilities. Not to say we just did the safety measures, we didn't do the entire needs for each facility. As you know, back then, about three years ago when we presented, I believe, the needs were over fifty million dollars. So we've done it up to ten million dollars and we have a few projects that are uh, are in the process to be completed for U R A.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Willis.
Mr. Um, Vanzuela, uh, just to, I just want to ask some questions so we can get this stuff on the record. Uh, these facilities that you're saying that need a lot of work, uh, did we inherit the facilities like this coming over from Fulton County?
Um, I, I would say, yes, ma'am. Uh, we had upon, I give, a good example will be the Welcome Mall. We have proofs of the conditions of the roof trusses that we had, the extensive work that needed to be done and been working with uh specialties uh that vary from all ranges. And if we have not replaced the roof, we probably were going to cave in with the roof because the truss could fail. We, we find those things out due to a roof failure, we open that up and we we discover the conditions of the trusses. And as you can see on Sandtown as well, we had multi remediation, but it was not just multi remediation. Once you open the walls, we have more things to do and more things to update and bring up to date.
And, and Mr. Um, Vanzuela, I mean, just, let's just talk about Welcome Mall facility alone because you know, you came over from the county and, and I'm, I'm glad you have that historical knowledge. Just from us, we've only been a city since we established in twenty seventeen. We transitioned parts to the city of South Fulton roughly in twenty nine, twenty eighteen, not twenty nineteen. Um, about how much money do you think we have dumped into or not dumped, that's not appropriate, or allocated to trying to bring uh Welcome Mall Park, just that one facility, uh? Approximately, how much money between the U R A and the general fund do you think we have spent in Welcome Mall Park just with the roof, uh, you know, trying to restore some of the uh the tennis courts, the lighting that was invested to be placed in the parks, removal of trees? Uh, approximately, how much money do you think just in that one facility we have probably invested?
Um, I can tell you clearly without looking at uh details of what I have on the books, it is over, uh, but end of the day, it's going to be over three point five million dollars.
And, and, and at the tennis center, um, you know, we use the U R A and uh, general fund, um, we have rebuilt the courts. We're now bringing that facility up to A D A compliance. We uh have approved Georgia Power to uh, you know, upgrade the lights. The lights will be underground. Approximately, how much money do you think we have allocated to that facility?
Uh, I think at this point, that facility is over, um, it's over one point five million dollars.
Thank you, I E O.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, seeing no further hands and no one else in the queue. Uh, did you want to, could we go on to our next item in the city manager's report? The initiatives aligned with the strategic plan.
Yes, Mayor, out of respect for time, if uh you refer to, I believe it's page five of, of my report, you know, see um the initiatives which we focused around, again, communication, just trying to share uh the good news of the things that we're doing here in the city of South Fulton.
Okay, uh, does anyone have any questions about this section of the report?
Mayor, if you don't mind, can you please uh just for the, because these meetings are for the public. So if you don't mind, you know, yes, we can go and read this information, but you're big on public getting information and transparency. You definitely big on that, Mayor. So if you don't mind, could we, could we please just pull up that one page?
I do not disagree, Councilwoman Willis. Can we go ahead and pull that up, Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clerk has it. It's on, uh, I think I said page five. It's actually page three.
And would you allow the city manager to uh, to uh project for the, for the education of the public? Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And um, if I'm not mistaken, this information is attached to the agenda packet, so it is, um, the public does have access to it. Uh, but in regards to our strategic goals, uh, we mainly focused on strategic goal number three. Um, Communications Department. Um, Communications Department, uh, worked together along with Public Affairs to play stories in the Atlanta media. Uh, the first one was South Fulton Offers Reward and House Fire, and these were from December. And then the amendment that bans signs in the right of way. The next one was City Extends Hours For Bars. And then City Acts To Slow Roaming Cases. And again, these were all related to our strategic goal number three, increased community collaboration and quality of life. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mayor Protem Reeves, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, man, that was about handing up from the last one. Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilwoman Willis, did you have a question?
No, thank you, um, Mayor.
All right. Um, we'll go on to the last item in the city manager's report, briefing on contracts and purchases exceeding twenty five thousand.
If I'm not mistaken, Mayor, I believe Miss Karen Slaton Dixon, our finance director, ran over those two purchases during her report.
Uh, could we just, uh, could you just highlight what those two were again? I'm sorry, just because this is where it is on the agenda, I do want to follow the agenda.
Okay, Miss Slaton Dixon. Give me just some more, let me pull that up.
And Mayor, thank you for letting her do this because we had some technical difficulties during that time, um, when Slaton Dixon was reporting.
No problem.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we had the the two contracts that were actually issued over twenty five thousand dollars. Was the Showmobile Stage, which went to Winger Corporation for two hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred twenty five dollars. And that contract is for December the nineteenth, two thousand twenty two through October the nineteenth, twenty twenty three. And then we had the Rental Assistance, which went to Anzer Advisory. And it was for their administration fee of a hundred thousand dollars. And that contract is for January the third, twenty twenty three, through January the second, twenty twenty four, with a two-year renewal option. And those were the two contracts that have been issued since the last meeting in November.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, what is the Showmobile Stage? What was, can you go back to that?
And that was an item for Parks and Rec. They got approval to get a second stage. And so this particular company is actually going to do the the mobile stage wrapping for Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay, so we are purchasing a new stage and they're gonna pretty much brand it for our city.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, we we've got about thirty minutes left in this section. Uh, while we were going through, I did speak with the First Amendment Foundation. They've agreed to hold their presentation for the sake of time. We will hear from them on Tuesday, January twenty fourth at the regular meeting. So we can go to the transportation safety update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we won't take long for this one. I spoke to Mister Antonio and there's some things that he wanted to get update before coming back and giving us a full presentation on this. However, I wanted to ask him about some, a couple of things about some updates for some of the traffic studies that we have been working on and we are we are with those because I know everyone is aware that we have really had some fatalities in the city as a spate of them um, in the last, um, say in the last year or so. And I know some of my colleagues, especially D two and D three, um, have been working on getting things like Enan Road looked at. And so is Mister Valenzuela can come back and comment on where we are with some of these things and for some of the plans going forward. We've had questions from the public as to how difficult it is, for example, to get things like speed bumps in their communities. So I just want us to have this initial discussion on where we are as a city. And Miss Sadler Jones, this is something that we really need to look at overall and you need to help lead us through to see what kind of program we can come up with. Last year, we talked about putting a public um, a public, a series of public announcements together, right? So that we can kind of help to educate the public as well. Um, so I I'm hoping that this is just the beginning of this conversation and as we move on throughout this first quarter. We we come up with specific, specific action items um, of what we're gonna do as a city on top of those things that we're doing that might be more focused in certain areas and certain communities. Mister Valenzuela?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir. Um, I I I can touch very briefly, uh, first of all, on the current uh, uh, traffic calming ordinance approved by council and mayor and council in the past. And it's something that I think, uh, um, council residents, CDRA, and us can be, as well as PD can be looking, look at again and see if if it's the the desire to to soften up the percentages that we are to obey by when we do those traffic analyses and recommendations and when we go back to our our two communities that request the traffic calming from us. Um, typically, when this comes out in front of us, we are required to receive a seventy seventy five percent of the real property owners or rental occupants requesting for that. In many instances, we don't receive that percentage, so we we're not able to to proceed with anything. Or sometimes, um, the procedures and requests, they don't follow through it and then it goes in different directions. But, uh, we're making sure that going going forward, I think a few months ago, we are very explicit when we respond to any request that comes from any council or any subdivisions that comes to us, we present to them the audience and the presentation as well as all the forms and documents that they need to follow with us. Then, uh, the other item that I want to make sure that we all follow the audience is the the speed, uh, the speed standard. It's pretty much over the metro area is the eighty five percentile speed, which is little miles per hour or greater than the posted speed limit. So, uh, roads are designed to a minimum speed limit of twenty five miles per hour. So within subdivisions and the specific roads that we we are requested to be, to do, uh, traffic studies. Uh, in many cases, we don't find the eighty eighty five percentile. So the responses are that it didn't meet the criteria. So, uh, all we do is gather the, grab the information that we receive on traffic counters and provide back a summary report. And when it doesn't meet, sometimes we find that uh, not necessarily that our reports are received and are friendly man. Um, those are the the main items that I wanted to share with you. And then finally, in some cases, like, uh, when it's actually approved and we see that it is, it made the conditions. Then we find before installation, we're going to meet the communities and so on. Then we have to ensure that the eligible petitioners from areas where they're gonna be installed, it's at eighty eighty percent of property property owners in the neighborhood and ninety percent of the property owners along the affected road. So if those conditions are not met, we cannot force as a city to install any kind of tra- traffic devices within in front of a household that are not in agreement. So those are the main things, but when it comes to some of the areas that you have requested from us, uh, we're doing a much better, uh, better job with our current consultants that we have. Uh, we have received, uh, traffic calming petitions for the Sandtown Center, Ena Road, Ena Road, the Bendiva Road, Wallace Road, Borwatt Road, Old Bill Cook Road, Millane Lane, Heatherland Drive, Cedar Grove Road, Roosevelt and Washington Road, Stonewall Hotel Union Road, Thane Road. So we have the results, the counts were completed, we have, uh, we're 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 gonna provide to you a specific report for all those roads that uh, those roads and subdivisions where we receive. As the report's being completed, uh, you're gonna receive our reports. Or we might just package a one report and provide to you all what we have encountered and what are the findings of our reports.
You, so.
Yes, sir.
Do you think you'll be ready to maybe put that report into your Public Works Report for next month? Or do I I have it as a separate item?
I can do it, but I prefer that it goes in a separate report because that's not a monthly report. And then I'll let, I I might be able to do it earlier. But it's coming, it will come for you with the sales of each of those. Then if I need more time for all the roads, uh, we will note on the report. But, uh, let let, allow me to present just a separate report for traffic calming.
Okay.
With that, should you have any questions? I'm here to respond to any questions that you may have.
Okay, um, I see in the queue Dr. Rao.
I'm sorry, that was from previously, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Willis.
So Mister Vansuela, I mean, I know this is a a topic of discussion that we really need to get around because we we have several residents requesting for traffic calming specifically, speed bumps or speed humps throughout the city of South Fulton. And the criteria for that, uh, for people to be eligible for speed bumps, the petition uh, for an area has to be, is it, what is that percentage?
Uh, the initial petition is seventy five percent.
Okay, seventy five percent. And even once they get the petition, if they get the signatures, is there a financial criteria for that seventy five percent of the community? Or for that community to to have to pay?
Eventually, if we get to a point where it meets the criteria and and we meet with the community and they agree to whatever traffic calming suggestions that we might provide to them, uh, the the audience, uh, states that, uh, construction will be paid by the, uh, the request store. However, I should aware of under the speed, um, cameras we have, uh, we have allocated and small dollar amount for each district that it can be used for those purposes.
Okay, so for the average speed bump installation, uh, what is the cost ranging?
No, it it varies it, but I'm, we're doing one now, it's, um, it's, uh, in the average of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. But it depends, you know, maybe a subdivision is smaller where we might need, where where we might have only one road. Or we might have a bigger subdivision where they have two, three roads that, uh, that it meets the criteria. But I would say it it varies, you know. But I can provide you what will cost for per section on on a particular road. If we install only one, uh, one section on the road, then we can go from there. Uh, that will come also on on my report, promise to add that.
Okay, and so you said you've already done the study for certain half volume traffic in areas. Like one of the worlds you you just questioned was Ben Hill and Welcome Mall, correct?
Uh, not Ben Hill and Welcome Mall is not, we have not received for Ben Hill and Welcome Mall. But, uh, it it is, um, I I think we need to think very clearly on some of our corridors, you know, that, uh, we do have in the city. Uh, I will not recommend adding, uh, some kind of traffic, uh, calming devices such as on Welcome Mall or or, uh, Butler Road or Stonewall Hotel or Fable Road and so on because we don't want to delay issues of responding to our fire department, power, uh, police department and others that they will have to be going through the speed tables and so on. Our recommendation will stay within subdivisions.
Okay, and so, uh, what did you say? You said, I thought you said you did an evaluation, maybe I misunderstood on some of these areas. What was that evaluation? You said you were gonna be releasing that information to us?
So we've done the traffic counts and we've done the traffic study. And we have evaluated the data if it meets the eighty five percentile that's required in order to proceed with traffic calming.
Okay. Okay, I'll I'll wait for that report because I know you said you're bringing it back in February. I just, and I'll get with you offline. I appreciate your responses. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, I have a few questions. Uh, this one, uh, the the first one, Mister Valenzuela, I I is is for you and I guess whoever is handling our website at this at this point. Um, the the Public Works Report that you give every month. And 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 really, this would, this would probably be for all the reports that we um, are now getting in these work sessions. Is it possible to have them, um?
Upload it?
Uploaded to each department's page, so the city manager's report would be on her page. These reports that we're discussing would be on your page and people can just go and find them?
Uh, yes, sir, it's the actual report for the month of November. It was uploaded by Ustand Correct and, uh, I I'm in full agreement that, uh, reports that are related to each department should be on the website of that department so that when we discuss with our residents, we can direct them to our webpage and make sure that they go straight to a specific page. And and then with time, they will be used to it, how to go to Public Works website, website and get, uh, the most needed information uh, on anything that we're doing. Uh, as we are growing, uh, uh, yes, we want to have it, we want to have the best webpage for Public Works and we want to provide the best information as well.
All right, well, thank you, um, Madam City Manager, because you know, this is your staff. Is is that something you think that you can work on? Or have?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, we can work on that and we're trying to make sure that it's included, you know, with the agenda item as well as on the the page.
Awesome, awesome. I think that 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 will really help some residents that are asking. Sometimes, you know, it's hard to go through these these long agendas. All right, so I want to just ask a few questions now about, um, the speed bump fund. Uh, I wrote the initial legislation and I think as is the case with the uh, blighted property fund, that the requests that we are seeing will likely necessitate, uh, increasing the funding. I I I want to just start by ab, by going back through the requirements because my reading of the legislation is that there are multiple uh, petitions and and minimums that must be met. So I, please correct me if I'm wrong, there is a petition to do the traffic study. And then there is a second petition to pay for the traffic calming installation, is that correct?
No, the the first petition is that, uh, it's subdivision, uh, which the audience mentions it for subdivisions. There should be a seventy five percent out of that subdivision in agreement to petition for traffic calming.
So so there is no petition for the traffic study, anyone can just ask for a traffic study and then you go out and do it?
No, that will be seventy five percent because that costs money as well. And money, time and power and so on, we definitely want to have some order. But for specific roads where we see different issues, might be a capacity analysis or maybe that traffic is just went up too much and we need to do something with those roads. When we do our design for roads, uh, we do a full nine yards on on traffic studies on those roads.
All right, so to be clear. Alright, so to be clear, if I am in a subdivision. Seventy-five percent of the subdivision must complete a petition. To even have the traffic study done?
Uh, that's correct. And we typically work with the president of the subdivision. Or whoever they design, they, they, they sign with it for that subdivision. In some instances, we got five, four people, but we got much better. We provide to them with the point of contact. Whether you wanna be copy on this and we like to have some kind of order as well, so that way that we can be. More effective when we provide the information out.
Okay, and, and for neighborhoods that are not in subdivisions?
Right, that's a little hiccup that we have, because we, so, in some areas, uh, we don't have subdivisions. We have associations or they don't have, uh, um. Somebody that represents them. They have one or two, but they don't represent entire association to say, not call a subdivision. That's when, uh, we have issues, uh, with the, uh, this, uh, ordinance. But, but, but still, I think we need to have it, uh, they need, they, they will need to form their own committee. So they can legally be representing an association or so on. And I think there's some room. In the audience that we can amend to incorporate those associations, but under certain guidelines or rules. That they also have to follow, so that, and also association is fully and properly represented.
I, I hear that. My specific question though would be, and, and that is, you know, figuring out a point of contact is, is, is one challenge. But how do you determine the impacted area for. A neighborhood or a community? Is that just your sole determination? And I'm just gonna use, I'm going to use this neighborhood that I'm living in as an example. Lock Loman actually has a neighborhood association. But some streets are not in that neighborhood association. Or at least a portion of the street that I'm on is not in that neighborhood association. So. Would, would it be, would your office make the determination that these are the houses that, that comprise. The neighborhood for which seventy-five percent signatures will be required?
Uh, yes, I, I think you, uh, you asked a question, a two-part question. The first one is. My office and then one of my, uh, representatives will ensure that. The request stores live in that association and they are belong to that association. That's one. And then we provide them information in accordance of the tax accessories that we have and GIS and so on. Will ensure that we don't receive two, three signatures for one household. In some cases, we receive those cases and we reject those things because it's only one signature for, for residents. And the second question that you asked was, who will decide what roads need to be analyzed for traffic calming or speeds and so on? We work with the request store and with the neighbor, neighborhood, we ask them what roads do you need? So, and they typically ninety percent out of a hundred, we were told, we want Row A and B to be analyzed. And that's why we concentrate on it.
That's not my question. My question is, if I live in a neighborhood that is not a clearly defined subdivision. Who decides which neighbors are included in that seventy-five percent?
So tha- that's one of the hiccups that we have, because that's when the, I think the, the audience needs to be amended. To bring those non-subdivisions or, or particular streets or roads that don't belong to an association or so on. How do we handle those things? What should be the rules that they need to be engaged to so we can, uh, get them under consideration?
All right, next question. Is the seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of householders? Or seventy-five percent of homeowners?
It's, it's both. Uh, it, it, at that point is both of them residents or, or, or owners.
So if I live in a subdivision that doesn't have seventy-five percent home ownership. Does that mean that my subdivision cannot get speed bumps?
No, i- i- it includes homeowners or whoever lives in, if you have it, uh, I guess if you're renting and you're not the homeowner. You can sign for the petition, uh, on, uh, requesting traffic calming.
Okay, and so once, once, let's, let's, let's jump ahead. The, we, we got the seventy-five percent, you've done the study, you've decided that, uh, you know, traffic calming could be used. Is there a, a second petition for the traffic calming itself? There used to be in the ordinance.
So this, this, once we determine perhaps that it, it meet the eighty-five percent high. Okay, so we say, you subdivision met, uh, the traffic calming order, audience. Then we have our engineers to prepare different solutions. And then we go back and meet with community and they vote on that. And then we have a plan of action going forward to design a little further. But before we're gonna go into the installation, that's when we have the next step, which is. That we have to receive eighty percent of property owners in the neighborhood. And ninety percent of the property owners along the affected road.
Okay, thank you so much. That's, that's the, the question that I wanted to get to. In some neighborhoods. There isn't eighty to ninety percent homeownership. People are renting. And so I, 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 I am challenged. I understand the requirement for homeowners to sign. If homeowners are paying, but if the speed bump is being provided. Out of the pedestrian safety fund. Then why would we require, why would we have that high bar for homeowners? And not actually residents that are in the neighborhood? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, absolutely. I, I'm with you and, uh, we have, uh, in the meeting. Uh, we have residents, we have our, our attorneys, uh, and we have our wonderful counsel. And other directors that, you know, definitely have a good input on, uh, for the traffic calming that, you know, we work. Uh, on the technical data and then the installation and, and construction and maintenance. But we have to rely on CDRA, fire, police and others that to ensure that. We, we all are in full agreement on how we get to proceed.
Thank you. So I ju- yeah, I just wanted to, to highlight those challenges that are in the current ordinance. Uh, but my understanding of the current ordinance is that that eighty to ninety percent of homeowners was required. Because they would through, uh, an assessment or increased fees that they would pay for it. But I think that once we have eliminated that with the speed bump fund. Then that would hopefully be, we could also eliminate that requirement. Because people have actually already paid for these services through taxes once. All right, uh, Councilwoman Willis.
So, uh, I just would like for us to get some kind of, I mean, because I have a huge neighborhood. That is, uh, over three hundred and fifty homes in it. And that is not the case. Seventy-five percent of that entire subdivision is not having to sign a petition. The actual streets that's requesting the speed humps are, is the street. Where over, where seventy-five percent of the resident, residents are being requested. To sign the petition and then it's not the residence, it's. Who, it's the resident who live in the home or the occupant, which could be a rental property. And that is exactly what was given to me in writing, that was given to the residents of ri- writing and that's what they are focusing on. So what I just heard from mayor was totally conflicting to what me and the residents have been told. So we really need to get some type of consistency around this. And, um, consistency and, and I would ask, uh, Attorney Hyman. If you can opine on whether or not we can pull this out as a separate subject from the traffic comment. I know this is a form of traffic comment. I don't know, but we really need to spend some time around this. Because we're getting prevalent requests around speed humps. And, uh, Mr. Uh, Venezuela, you did make a very valid point. Where speed humps may not be feasible for every area. Because we do have to take into consideration emergency vehicle access. Thank you.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
All right, seeing no further questions, uh, please sound the last item. Those of you all who are joining for the zoning hearings, if you would just allow us about ten more minutes. We are finishing the last item from this work session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the last item on the agenda is the tree fund presentation. Uh, this was added by Councilmember Willis and will be presented by the Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Department, Derek Hall.
Thank you, Mister, uh, thank you, City Clerk and, um, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is going to be a, a brief presentation and, um. Again, wanna just, uh, thank, uh, Councilwoman Willis, um, um, and, um. Other council members, Councilmember Sebastian has inquired about the tree fund. Councilwoman, um, Rao has also inquired, um, Councilmember. Uh, Williams and Reeves have inquired specifically, um, in relation to looking at. What council recently adopted, which was the old, uh, National Highway, uh, LCI. Uh, and just, uh, I think everybody is trying to understand kind of. How we can use funding to help provide additional trees across the city. So I will be brief in my presentation. I will also note that, uh, for council. Um, I'm working with, um, our finance director and her team, um, Karen. And we will be providing you with a separate, um, accounting of the funding that we have in the tree fund. We're just reconciling, uh, some of the, uh, deposits that have been made. So that, uh, we can give you a full accounting exactly of the funding that we have. And that you're able to use in your, uh, respective districts. Um, so, but, um, Councilwoman Willis wanted to, uh, wanted me to provide an overview, uh, for council and the public. And so, um, I will start this presentation if that's not a problem. Oh, go ahead. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just saw her hand up. I didn't know if, if there was a, a question before I get started.
No, without, you can go ahead. These are.
Okay, alright. So a- as a part of this review, we look at the, um, ordinance. As you all know, there is an ordinance, Section Eight, Title Fourteen, uh, it's called the Tree Planting Program. Uh, and I wanna just first begin by summarizing what the use of funds are currently in the ordinance. Um, and, uh, the ordinance allocate, allocates money equally across council districts. Um, the fund itself is administered by the Finance Department, um, and that is why we've been coordinating. With the Finance Department who has tracked all of the payments received. Uh, and the money that is, um, to be dispersed, uh, after we, um, decide on the projects. And council approves those recommendations. Uh, currently, the funding can be used to purchase. Trees, uh, for planting, uh, installation of trees. Uh, funding can also be used for treatment and removal of dead trees. And that's in those that are dying or diseased vines, shrubs and invasive species. Um, it is worth noting in the ordinance that twenty-five percent or less of funds can be used on maintenance. So no more than twenty-five percent can be used for maintenance. And pru- and this includes pruning trees, additional labor and some other contractual activities related to the maintenance of those. Um, as it was outlined in the ordinance, uh, the funding can be used at city-owned properties. Uh, but also publicly owned and maintained properties. Um, and so these might be properties that are not necessarily owned by the city. But are publicly owned or maintained by the city, conservation areas and green space and other, other governmental properties. Now, there is a caveat to that last bullet and that is, uh, and that's contingent on there being a, a executed agreement. Between the city of South Fulton and the government entity. Um, as it relates to, I mentioned that, um, the Finance Department is the keeper, collector of the fees. And keeps track of, uh, our funding on a spreadsheet. But the administration lies, uh, jointly between Public Works Department as well as CDRA. Uh, and so, you know, I'm giving this presentation as I always say, in partnership with, um. Director Venezuela and also with, uh, Director, uh, Slayton Dixon. Um, as the three departments are working together to kinda fully administer and understand how this, uh, fund. And this, uh, ordinance works. Um, the Public Works Director and Community Development Director will offer recommendations to council for proposed locations within each district. Um, there are some general standards that were adopted as a part of the ordinance. So a minimum of three-inch calip- caliper species of hardwoods. Uh, chosen from the approved tree list. Um, the tree placement, uh, has to be adjacent to. Or within row right away, subject to the approval of the traffic engineer. Um, and, you know, it's great to have, uh, the Public Works Director to be a partner in this. Because in some instances, you know, and depending upon the type of tree, there may be some conflict with having trees. Uh, very close to the road right away. But he, um, and his team, along with my team, um, and any consultants that we may need, will provide the recommendations based upon kind of that. Um, now, one final activity that needs to occur, I'm not quite sure that it has occurred. Is that annually, CDRA and the Finance Department are required to submit an annual report of the tree planting. So I imagine that this is the funding that's being collected, but then also the trees that have been planted. Or the trees that have been maintained in accordance with the ordinance. Uh, this next slide shows the basic accounting, uh, that's in the tree fund, uh, escrow account. I will note that we have quarterly meetings to discuss the tree fund. And at the, um, the last meeting I held, the accounting department provided me with this information. So this just provides you with the total amount that has been collected. Um, as of the end of the fiscal year for the city of South Fulton, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, and then, and having a conversation, um, with the county, uh, it was noted that, uh. Some of the funds that are in this balance include funds that are refundable. But then it also includes the non-refundable number, which is why we will be providing a more detailed listing. Of the available funds that we have for use in your specific districts. Uh, so as it relates to the next steps, um, as I indicate here, we'll reconcile the accounting. We'll provide mayor and council with the reports so that you can see individually across the years. Um, the entities that have paid into the tree fund, um, and then we'll provide you with the dollar amount. That we have and it will be split within the seven districts. We'll coordinate meetings with elected officials, um, and the idea is, you know, your district's probably better than anybody. Um, and so while we will recommend, um, some activities, we also wanna get your input in terms of. Where we think we should have these projects, um, if you want to focus on planting versus maintenance. You know, whatever, um, you know, your thoughts are, and then we will provide our professional opinions as well. But the idea is to generate a list so that we can have these projects and these activities, these locations within each district. And begin to spend the money. If, in the event that we are placing trees or putting in recommendations. Where there will be an assessment or there will be a need. where there will be an assessment or there will be a need to have an intergovernmental agreement because the location is a right-of-way that is not owned by the city. It might be a state road and their area of influence related, or the ownership doesn't necessarily lie within the city. We will conduct the assessment to determine those intergovernmental agreements and then put in place provisions to make sure that those items can get executed. Outline a schedule and timeline, identify the specimen trees, submit a staff report for council, prepare RFP if required for contractual services, and then implement the recommendations. So that is where staff is related to just kind of understanding at a high level the tree fund ordinance, the tree planting ordinance, and providing a roadmap for council to kind of understand where we are today and where we hope to go in the next month or so. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll conclude my presentation. And my colleagues are all here. If there are some additional questions that I can't answer related to any of the stuff that was discussed, any other items that were discussed in this presentation.
Okay. Alright, some folks are using the queue, some folks are using the Zoom, so I do see Sebastian Willis and Rao, and we'll go in that order. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Hall. As part of the additional financial source of the fund details, will you be providing the source, the input source by district?
Yes, and we do, I have confirmed that accounting does have most of these, you know, and I'm sure you all know, but maybe the public is not aware. Most of the money that is placed into this fund is the result of development that's occurring across the city. And as a result of that, we have listed the development project that, and we will have a column where it discusses not only the location, but the district for which the city received the funding.
Alright, thank you. My reason for asking that question, I I know it may not be a very popular stance, and I mentioned this to Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Willis, I believe, this week, is that if we think back to how we use the URA fund, it was not distributed equally across districts. It was distributed based on need. Right? I know it was facility-based, and this is not it wasn't trees. But I dare say that if, for instance, given the level of land clearing that has happened in District Four since we became a city, I would want to say we were probably one of the highest contributors to the, the fund. However, as it is currently outlined, there is a bias, a built-in bias against District Four. And by that, I mean District Four has no public buildings except two fire stations, right? We also have two parks that are not necessarily being used to their highest capacity. Citigroup Park, for example, have a lot of trees and I would dare say a lot of unhealthy trees. So I'm not even sure if that money is distributed equally across districts rather than by need. How that would play out in terms of specifically District Four? But having very little government facilities over here, which is part of the the tree fund rules, then I would dare say that we would have, we would, again, be a contributing district. But having a bias against being able to utilize funds, appropriate funds out of that tree fund to do things that we may want to do, especially to Citigroup Park. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, because again, if we think URA funds, it was not done equally across districts. And sadly to say, because of that, again, District Four was given very little out of the URA funds. And that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Sebastian. And I, and I want to say thank you so much for that comment. We have had we've approached this conversation when we talked about CDBG funds, which are supposed to be used in census tract areas of low income, which tend to be concentrated in certain areas of the city. We, we, I think this has also been an issue with the Blighted Property Fund, and even to some extent, the pedestrian safety fund. I do think that at some future meeting, perhaps at our retreat, we will have to have a courageous conversation about how these funds are being distributed, because you are very right. While we are equally distributing these small pots of money, the larger pots of money around capital, not just the URA, but even capital expenditures are not, are not divided equally. So we have to come up with a way that is, that is fair and respects the development that has happened, as well as the development that did not happen in, in, in other areas. Councilwoman Willis.
Sorry, sorry, could I just say one thing, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the, sorry, Councilmember Willis. In terms of the CDBG funds, again, District Four does not have any census tract that qualifies for CDBG funds. So I just want to make sure I bring that out too, okay?
So, thank you for recognizing me and Mayor, I, I, you know, I'm just surprised that you didn't bring clarity to this conversation because you were on council when we adopted, when we created the Urban Redevelopment Authority. And the Urban Redevelopment Authority was not created to be evenly distributed. We had a long conversation around that. The Urban Redevelopment Authority of seventeen million dollars was created because we did not have enough money in our general fund to bring buildings that we inherited in disrepair from the county up to Par. Now, there was no bias that, you know, came into play when it came to the Urban Redevelopment Fund. But what happened is, we had to figure out how to get money to bring fire stations that were closed, to remediate a lot of buildings that had mold in it and our employees were subject to, to bring some of our current facilities that exist in our city up to Par, and even seventeen million dollars wasn't a lot of money. The sole purpose of the Urban Redevelopment Authority, if you go back to when it was recreated, was created, was to use the money to remediate our buildings that we currently have and bring the buildings up to Par. The tree fund is of, right now, as of this day, three million dollars. That is not, that's no money to do anything for anybody's part. And we are currently under, we have a park master plan underway. And then we're in a phase of where we're now talking about probably doing a splot so we can raise the money to develop and to, to develop some of our parks and to bring some of our park and recreation facilities up to Par. I have already talked to Mr. Hall about some ways that we can be creative in using the tree fund. And, you know, plant, other than plant trees, and he has given me, and I'm working with the legal team to amend this, so that we can have the flexibility to use the tree fund for lighting, wayfinding signage, benches, irrigation, trash cans, and also for some, for some and, and for reducing lanes of traffic, crosswalks, landscaping, and other recommendations that will support planting and removing trees. And so these are some other flexibilities that he has recommended, has already sent to me, it's over in legal, then I'm bringing back. To, to, to say that, that we are generating one, I mean, money from one district more than, and they should get more of the money. I, I think we really need to look hard at this, because three thou- three million dollars is not a lot of money. And if you look at the screen, grand scheme of things, this entire city needs benches at bus stops. They need irrigation, they need trash cans, they need lighting, they need lighting. And so, I think that we need to focus on a park master plan to make sure that we are funding these areas that need parks or remediation of parks. And then have that serious conversation of allocating the resources to the parks that really need parks. We have some areas that don't have parks at all. And then we have some areas that have parks, but there was never any vision or any plan for those parks. So, I, I want to use that word bias as, you know, I don't, I don't think, I know we didn't create the URA fund, and I know why we didn't evenly distribute it. Because the whole purpose of the URA fund, and you can go back, is documented, is to, for us to bring the buildings that we inherited from Fulton County that were in disrepair up to Par. And so with that being said, I am seeking sponsors for that amendment, so we can have the flexibility to use that, seeking cosponsors to use this tree fund for other things other than just planting and removing trees. So we have some of the recommendations in the LCI where we can put benches, where we could put irrigations, where we could put trash cans and lighting. We can, we have the flexibility to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just failed to mention, and I'm glad Councilwoman Willis brought it up. When we were taking on this assignment, there were two plans in particular, outside of the comprehensive plan. The, the walkability study that was done along Roosevelt Highway, and then most recently, as I mentioned earlier, the old National Highway LCI. And Councilwoman Williams, I remember so vividly your comment to the city manager saying, you know, after this plan is adopted, we don't want it to sit on the shelf. So when we took this task on, we began to look at some of the resources, like the tree fund, to see how we can start implementing some of these recommendations. And so part of what we're hoping to do, again, when Public Works and I and Finance scheduled the meeting with the individual council members and the mayor to talk about projects, we can look at some of these approved plans and identify where we can fund some of these initiatives.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Dr. Rao.
Thank you for recognizing me. You know, there's been a lot of conversations, and I think the courageous conversation is that we all have to recognize that there is not enough money for the needs that we have across this city at any given one time. When we talk about the tree fund, we have well over three million dollars worth of needs in our public right-of-way and in our parks alone. So when we talk about taking that money and redirecting it to another area, I just think we have to, we have to stay focused. I know, we've been waiting for Cascade Palmetto and Cascade to get trees pruned in a right-of-way. Every time we have a storm, I'm putting in C Click Fix trees that need to be moved, and we have invasive species all over the place. And while I appreciate and understand, we need to look at all these things and equity may need, well, it needs to be a part of the conversation. We would also have to look at the fact that, heck, I have, if we wanted to look at URA alone, we have, I have five facilities in District One. It didn't, it didn't amount to that in terms of an equity conversation, but I think we all have to be able to understand this give and take. The improvements we made are, are basic. They didn't take us to the next level. Some of it was replacing outdated generators and the like. And I just think we have to, we have to be honest with our constituents. We have to plan, not just this year, years ahead, to do a number of these things, or we're gonna have to pull it from our reserves. It's really that simple. And we definitely need to go back to getting aggressive about pursuing grant funding. We're not doing enough of that. I, I respect what Councilwoman Willis says about, you know, us adopting plans and not letting them sit on the shelf. But we need to be as focused and, and somebody on that process too, are helping implement those projects so that they move forward and they don't just sit. But we can't keep Rob and Peter to pay Paul either, because that's not gonna work. I've been waiting. I know I have a C Click Fix about trees on Cascade that go back over a year. So I want to know who is going to own this process that we just heard about? Is it with the City Arborist? Is it with, you know, Public Works? Because I saw Public Works gave feedback. I need to know. I think our challenge is, how is this stuff being implemented and who's owning it? Because that's the challenge.
Madam City Manager, did you want to respond to that question?
Yes, I mean, I can't. I think the, the, the answer to the question is right now, it's being managed through our Community Development Department. And so I think that that would be the best department to keep it in. But knowing, of course, you know, that the financial aspect of it will be managed through our Finance Department.
Alright, thank you. I am going to.
Can I ask a follow-up, one follow-up question? Does that mean, does that mean that in terms of after we come up with these areas and these plans, who is going to manage to make sure the trees are pruned or whatever, because I have tree issues all over my area?
Well, the Arborist still falls within the Community Development Department, so.
He will be the point of contact?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I am, I'm going to entertain one last comment from Mr. Sebastian because we are thirty minutes over.
Mayor, that's not what our order, important order, that's not what our ordinance says. You can't just make that decision that you're not going to give people their, our ordinance says that we are allowed to speak twice.
Okay, our Councilwoman Willis, our Roberts Willis of Order states that you have to wait to be acknowledged, and that I do chair the meeting. We also have publicly noticed that we have a meeting beginning at six o'clock. And it's six-thirty. If you feel pressed to make the comment, I will say, Councilman Sebastian and Councilwoman Willis, you two will be the final comments. I will urge our city council to consider that we will not be able to have as many presentations. I've said this every month since we have been revising the work session ordinance. We had over an hour just to get through the city manager's report because of all of the things that have been added in that are now mandatory. I will urge our council again to consider, as we consistently go over time, that we may need to have a three-hour work session. I know that it's not something that people want to do, but in order to comply with this work session ordinance that allows up to four presentations plus an hour of reporting from the city manager, we just are not going to be able to comply with the ordinance if we, if we continue to have zoning hearings at six P M. And with that, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, because it seems as if I was misunderstood. And actually, the way how the URA funds were used, which by the way, once I came on this council and got a detailed explanation as to why the funds were distributed the way they were, I voted for every single thing that came before this council. My point really was that the URA funds were not distributed My point really was that the U R A funds were not distributed equally across districts because they could not be done that way because of the needs. Certain districts built in, right, had more facilities than others and certain facilities were on the disrepair than others that needed that money, right? But I'm gonna say again, the bias is built into the tree ordinance. Because with, without government facilities here, that it 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 clearly states in the presentation, that we need to, government facilities are one of the things that that thing can be one of the things can be spent on. Now, all of this other stuff that I'm hearing now is gonna be useful. I'm not quite sure I'm in agreement with all of that. Because some of that sounds like public work funds and other stuff. So if we need to take a look at uh the budgeting and all that sort of stuff, we we should. But when it comes to the tree fund, we cannot be continually continuously clearing lands in District Four for building residential properties and then taking that tree fund and distributing it equal across when we have things like parks here in District Four. Citigo Park has a walkway that cannot be used right now because of the state of disrepair. And we are a city that's five years old. So if we're talking about using the tree fund for other things besides trees, how would us fix that walkway so we have a walk track in the heart of District Four? So again, don't misunderstand what I said. I I I said I'm in agreement with how the U R A was used. But I'm not in agreement with distributing the tree fund equally across every district. Because we're a district that's putting in probably more than our share. And we put, uh equity don't mean equal. And that's all I'm gonna say on this. Thank you, guys.
Councilwoman Willis.
Mayor, thank you for recognizing me, but I did call upon a border when you said that you were not going to recognize anybody but uh Councilmember Sebastian. So I just want to put that on the record. Um. We all have trees across this district, and I will ask that we, Ms. Sally Jones, request for the staff to bring back a recommendation. Because what I will tell you is that I have to agree with Councilmember Ralph. Three million dollars in the grand scheme of things is not a lot of money. What I am simply asking for is the flexibility. What Miss, what's the Councilmember Sebastian just said is that if he has a sidewalk that needs to be, needs to be repaired or reconstructed because, for example, some of these trees are older than a hundred years old and they have branches that are tearing up sidewalks, that are tearing up streets. Right now, the tree fund does not allow for that flex- flexibility to repair the sidewalk, to repair repair the street. It does allow for the flexibility to us, for us to remove and plant trees. But it does not allow the flexibility for us to uh repair some things that should be public works. But if it's being a, if it's, if the damages is because of a tree, a tree trunk, all I'm saying is that allow us to use the flexibility. And right now, it's evenly distributed. I'm in agreement for it being evenly distributed because I can go through my whole district right now and give you a whole list of trees that need to be cut down, cut bad, removed. Uh, and 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 it hasn't been done. So I had a tree the other day that fell down in the middle of the street and the residents had been begging for months to have that tree cut down. And so, you know, that's the flexi- ability that I'm asking for. Again, the U R A was not evenly distributed because it was only created to bring buildings that we inherited and facilities that we inherited from the county to remediate them and try to bring some of them up to par. That's the only rea- that was the sole reason the U R A was created. This tree fund was not created to do that. Thank you.
All right, Mister Clerk, um. I'm going to move, um, I'm sorry, I'm not going to move. I can't move. But uh, I will entertain an emotion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Uh.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded, Mister Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to adjourn, Councilmember Ralph.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes, my, yes, my, um, thing was on me.
Thank you. Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett? The work session is adjourned at six thirty-five P M. That was, that motion was approved.
All right, I am going to uh ask everyone, I think you've already done it in the chat, if you will go ahead and switch over in your novice agenda to the uh the next meeting, the special call meeting. And Mister Clerk, uh-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, this is Councilwoman Pritchett. I was having a problem with my um, with my Zoom, so I wanted noted that that I voted yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, I will call the next meeting to order. Mister Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, this is the roll call for the zoning public hearing scheduled for January tenth, six P M. The Honorable Catherine F. Rouse, District One.
Yes, present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J. C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five. And the Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Linda Becura Pritchett, District Seven.
Present.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Kalid.
Present.
Mister Mayor, you have your call.
All right, Mister Clerk, if you would please sound the first item.
The first item is listed as number one under item three. It's a public hearing to consider Z twenty-two dash zero one seven. The applicant William Deal is requesting a rezoning from R three to R five A to construct forty-six detached single-family homes on ten point nine six acres of land. The subject property is located along S D's Drive, generally bounded by S D's Drive to the north, Ravenswood Drive to the east, Sable Run Road to the south, and Clearwater Drive to the west. The property is located in District Five. Uh, staff.
Mister Hall.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Clerk, do I need to pull up the presentation?
No, sir, it's coming up now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, good evening, Mister Mayor, Members of Council. Derek Hall, we're pointing on behalf of the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. Um, as the clerk has uh indicated, this is a zoning case twenty-two dash zero one seven, located in District Five on S D's Drive. By we have a bit of background information, uh, the project uh is located uh S D Drive to the north, uh Ravenswood Drive to the east, Sable Run to the south, and Clearwater Drive to the west. The request is to rezone from R three, single-family dwelling zoning district to town home. The original request, I should say, was to rezone um to town home residential. And initially, the applicant was gonna construct fifty-four townhome units with a proposed density of approximately four point nine three dwelling units per acre. Um, the project um, um, is consistent with the suburban two neighborhood land use designation of twenty thirty-five um Fulton County Comprehensive Plan. And that was at the time that it was submitted back in twenty twenty-one. There was a vote to deny the rezoning application, which was case number uh Z twenty-one dash zero zero one on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. The applicant, Mister Deal, has resubmitted a new application where he is still proposing a change of zone um to R five A, single dwelling, single-family dwelling zoning district. The revised plan included a reduction in the number of residential units from fifty-four townhomes to forty-six single-family homes. Uh, of note, there is an active quarry site approximately a quarter to a half mile from the project site. And so this illustration shows the current land use uh map. And um, in terms of the uh proposed, the proposed uh land use agricultural neighborhood, next slide, please. And the R three, single-family dwelling indicates the current zoning for the area. Next slide. The area map shows that there are existing single-family subdivisions to the north, to the south, to the east, and to the west. This illustration shows the updated site plan, and there are some features that also developer uh when he uh joins in can also share. But in addition to having a detention pond, uh, the applicant is proposing a community space, open space area. There will be a monument sign at the beginning of uh entering into the subdivision. Uh, there is a street promenade that um traverses through the project site with a open space courtyard area uh that will feature a children's play area, the mailbox kiosks, and some additional parking. Uh, each of these units, uh, as was mentioned, is single-family, and they do have attached garages. Uh, front-loaded garages from the street. Uh, there is a proposed dog park. Um, and we've requested that the applicant put in a meandering trail uh as a passive recreational amenity to the project site. These slides show the proposed elevations of the house. Again, these are front gar- uh, garages on the front um with the proposed landscaping. They are detached. These are just a couple of different elevations for this, for the project site. So as it relates to the analysis of the project, the revised development uh considers a reduction of the units from fifty-four to forty-six detached single-family homes. The uh minimum lot size is five, four thousand square feet. Uh, as was mentioned, the amenities include the children's playscape, walking trail, dock park, a community garden, and an open space area. Uh, there are, which is what was initially requested, um C U P zoning districts located in close proximity, which offers greater densities. But uh, the applicant, after having a series of meetings, uh, did um understand the concern of having greater densities, uh fifty-four dwelling units, uh, and was sensitive to the concerns of the community and reduced those numbers um by almost um eight units per se. And then uh just staff acknowledges uh the location of the quarry impact area. It's within a quarter mile um to a half a mile from the project site, depending upon where you're measuring. Uh, and so there have been some additional conditions that have been added to comply with the development standards prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. This item went to Planning Commission in December. Uh, staff recommended approval. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended denial. Um, staff has since met with the applicant in preparation for uh the the public hearing today um and for planning com- for city council's consideration. Um, if we go to the next slide, we have added some additional conditions. Those conditions are highlighted in red. So the three that were initially included were, uh, prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, submit evidence that the project can be constructed uh in accordance with the development standards and the comp plan and the zoning ordinance. And in these particular areas, they talk about developments being constructed to the quarry and the requirements that uh are are necessary. Um, but the additional conditions and the uh developer has proposed some additional conditions and staff has also proposed some additional conditions. And I'll just quickly summarize them. Part of the issuance, sorry, if you could go back. Part of the issuance of a land disturbance permit, the applicant is required to submit a structural engineering study with data collected over a period of no less than ninety days and is stamped by a licensed structural engineer. The report must conclude that the proposed residences will not experience any negative impacts from the quarry activities, including blasting, digging, and removal of uh the rubbish from the area. The um, and then the next um condition is prior to the issuance of a building permit for each residence. So for each resident that is being proposed, um, the applicant shall provide a sole compaction report showing adequate minimum load-bearing accommodations to support any impact by blasting, digging, or removal um of the gravel and of the sediment that's there. The report must show a minimum that fill within the building pad is compacted to at least ninety-eight percent um of this technical language that we have here. Uh, maximum dry density with the upper four feet below pavement's upgrade or floor slab slab subject to the approval of the city engineer. And then uh staff has added two additional uh conditions. Uh, there shall be no sale of any housing until a complete sole impaction and structural engineering report has been submitted to and approved by the city engineer. And then the covenants, conditions, and restrictions and the plat must contain language upfront or in that conspicuous area, uh particularly on the plat that denotes the proximity of the homes to an active quarry site. And we think, given these conditions and the redesign of the project, uh, staff still uh offers a recommendation of approval subject to the inclusion of these conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation. Uh, the clerk and I have received an email from the applicant, so the applicant is uh, I believe, available for any specific questions.
All right, uh, thank you. And I'm going to open the public hearing now. Uh, Mister Clerk, do we have any speakers for or against?
Yeah, so first we have the applicant who is available to make his presentation. Um, after he concludes, we did receive eight comments in opposition to this case. Uh, we have two speakers who are on the meeting call today who wish to uh provide live uh Zoom. And I previously sent you uh via email to the mayor and council the written comments of Michael Venable, Glenn, Glenda Collins, Alvin Reynolds, Pamela Harvey, Clyde Sampson, and Paul Baldwin.
All right, um, I want to be clear. So all of the people either, all of the comments are against.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to hear from the applicant. Um, I am going to put uh ten minutes on the clock for you, sir, and just know you may want to reserve some of that time uh for rebuttal.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is William Deal, Tucson Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. Uh, I'm representing the applicant tonight. And and as staff outlined in in its report, this is uh been an an application that has been uh presented after a lot of discussion with the city and a lot of uh uh improvements, we think, to the application that we've made from the prior application that was submitted last year. We have reduced the density, and in fact, we've reduced the density since uh the application was submitted. The application was submitted with forty-six units. We are now down to forty-two units. Uh, and expanded some of the amenities that have been offered. These are single-family homes, uh, and as you saw from the uh uh elevations that were submitted with this application, we're proposing uh quality uh, single-family homes that we believe are consistent with the surrounding developments, including in Sable Chase uh in the surrounding developments. Uh, so it's a high-quality product that we're going to be offering. Um, we have also worked with staff uh to address some of the concerns- Um, we have also worked with staff uh to address some of the concerns with the quarry uh zone. Um, as, as council sees, we've proposed two conditions. Those conditions require that my client provide uh an engineered reports and a report that is generated by its engineer after doing scientific studies. And the engineer is to show the data and to report to the city's engineer um how this proposed development can be built uh to withstand any uh, any negative impacts from the quarry. Um, so we are proposing with, with the conditions that are before you tonight uh, conditions in which we will demonstrate to city council and to the city engineer uh that we are building a high-quality product that is going to withstand any of the negative impacts from the quarry. I note there are a lot of uh both public infrastructures within the quarry zone and residential uh developments within the quarry zone. Uh, a number of single-family homes surround this area and are closer to the quarry zone. Uh, there are also city parks within the quarry zone that are closer to the quarry than this development and a number of uh schools that were, that are within this development. Um, Chick-fil-A even has its headquarters and a um, uh, uh, a daycare facility within very close, much closer proximity uh than this development is to the quarry. Um, so we're asking, and, and the conditions that we're proposing uh are to show the city that we can demonstrate that we're building a high-quality product, something that would can withstand. And we note that uh this is subject to the city's engineer's approval. So we're not asking the city to take our word for it, take our engineer's word for it. What we are saying is we are going to provide you with data that shows this is the uh quarry impact, and we are going to build a product that can withstand that. That's conditioned on zoning. So if the city council is to approve the zoning tonight, we still have work to do. We still have to show that this product is going to meet those standards. And again, those are standards that are going to be set by the city engineer. Uh, we are also going to show on the covenant codes and restrictions and on the plat that this is within the quarry zone. We're going to disclose that. My client as a requirement, as a home builder, will have to offer, offer a warranty. That warranty product is a ten-year warranty, complete warranty on structures uh and the foundation. So that's additional assurance that people uh who are buying these homes will have that the product that they are buying is a good quality and that it's backed by uh a warranty. And so we're asking for uh approval tonight with the conditions that are laid uh, were laid out by staff. Uh, and we look forward uh to working with the city on this. And I'll reserve any remaining time for rebuttal.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Clerk, you want to call the speakers against?
Yes. As I stated, we have two speakers that wish to provide live comment. And I would just like to preface bringing them on that please state your name, your address. Um, you have a total of ten minutes um collectively to make your uh comments. If possible, we ask that you keep it uh the two minutes so that others can uh provide their comment. The uh first speaker uh is Dee Claiborne. Ms. Claiborne?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Claiborne, I'm sorry. Uh, please state your name and address, and you may make your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dee Claiborne. I'm at thirty-four ninety Ravenswood Drive. Uh, two minutes is not nearly enough time to give you the full history of the property, it's zero STs, and the multiple attempts over the last fifty years to develop it. The problems those folks have experienced and the reasons why they pass those problems on to someone else. Many of these reasons were given to city council in twenty-twenty-one, who recognized the red flags and voted to deny rezoning the property for townhomes by this same developer. The residents have zero confidence in the developer's latest report. Red flag number one states the distance of the property to the rock quarry is point seven mile, when in reality it's a quarter mile. The current quarry excavation pit is closer to the southwest corner of the quarry than it was in the early two thousands, when many residents of Sable Glen and the surrounding neighborhoods sued Vulcan materials for damaging their homes and respiratory health. Fulton County designated the area as a quarry impact zone, preventing any more residential to be built nearby to protect citizens' health and property. Our own city zoning code, section three oh two point three five D states, no portion of a property proposed to be zoned to a residential zoning district shall be located within one point five mile radius of the property lines of an existing active quarry. We should not go against our own code for one developer. It is clear in both the Fulton Code and Comp Plan and the City Code and Comp Plan that new residential is not compatible. An argument of a property owner that the government has taken his property rights would be incorrect. The city needs to show him that they have not taken his rights and tell him what development options he does have. This is ultimately a life, safety, and quality of life argument. That is what governments are supposed to protect. Last month, the City of South Fulton Zoning Commission voted to deny this rezoning request. We, the citizens, ask you, Mayor and Council, to please do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Chandra Simmons. Ms. Simmons, if you're on the call, please unmute yourself, state your name and address, and you may make your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Chandra Simmons. I'm at three, four, eight, five Ravenswood Drive, City uh Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three four nine. I too am opposed to this development. Uh, in addition to the reasons that uh the gentleman prior to me stated, uh, I, I too am leaning on the comprehensive plan as it states the negative uh impact of the rock quarry uh and its impact on the community as well as this build here uh that this developer is proposing. Um, the gentleman that spoke prior to me absolutely laid it out uh in, in clear and concise fashion. Um, I too would like to see scientific data stating that there is not a negative impact as a result of this build. In addition to that, the ground that this development is proposed, I don't feel secure that those homes that will be built back there will be safe, sound, and constructed to withstand any environmental changes that will definitely take place. So in its place, I have uh mentioned to many of my neighbors uh discussing uh instead of those homes going back there, a community garden, uh, which would absolutely add a great uh addition to the City of South Fulton, providing quality, fresh, locally grown food within the community for the community. So in addition to what uh the previous speaker stated, we are asking you, uh, council members of the City of South Fulton, please do not go against your own uh comps plan and uh side or give this uh developer an opportunity to negatively impact not only the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhoods, but the City of South Fulton in general. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, does that conclude all of our comments against?
That is all of the uh live Zoom comments. I do have some written comments if you want those entered into the record.
Let's read those into the record.
Okay, the first comment is from Ms. Glenda Collins, who lives on Morning Creek Drive. Her comment is, we were not notified of the rezoning to construct these forty-six homes on this ten point nine six acres of land, which will affect the neighborhood since no notification or meetings were held to inform the neighborhood, which will have a major impact on Clearwater Drive, since this will be the exit from this development. We are totally against this because of no notification, no traffic study, no exit to Main Street, and has to be cut through an established neighborhood, blasting from the rock quarry. No law keep of when and how long a blasting may occur. The residents have no knowledge of the criteria used on blasting and do not know if the company is in compliance. End of comment. Next is Paul Ba- Baldwin, who lives on Clearwater. He says, established neighborhood, we were not notified of the zoning to construct these forty-six homes on the ten point nine six acres of land, which will affect. And actually, uh, he has the same comment as the previous person, um, sa- same uh written comment. Next is Michael Venable, who lives on Montelli Circle. Uh, the property is in a quarry zone fully displayed in the current land use map and written document. The staff recommendation for approval only considers the physical property mitigation measures for the environmental effects, but quality of life and community sustainability are not promoted. In order to mitigate the harmful effects to the future residents, the houses need to be equipped with full home air filtration systems along with airport noise-type countermeasures such as one-inch thick or more glass windows, double and triple sheet rock on all walls and ceilings, acoustic roofing, and full masonry siding. All the amenity package must have a clubhouse built with the same modifications due to the issues with being near an active quarry. Outdoor activities may not be conducive in the area. The development goal is not to exceed, not to expend the necessary resources to mitigate the environmental issues. It should be a standard that homes constructed near industrial sites, highways, railroads, airports, and landfills and quarries be prohibited. The residents in this area have complained about noise and structural damage for over a decade. If the city, if this city is going to talk the talk of environmental justice, the vote should be about it. The recommendation to deny this petition is appropriate both by policy and by morality. Next is Mr. uh Alvin Reynolds. He said, this case as stated in the analysis, paragraph three, with regard to the comprehensive plan, there is a development standard outlining the quarry impact overlay area that states that no new residential development should occur within a quarter mile to a half mile of an active quarry site without scientific data indicating that there will be no negative impacts from blasting and drilling operations. This alone disqualifies this project from being constructed. Uh, next is from Clyde Sampson. He says, please deny the development for Zero S T's Drive. This will bring more traffic to an already congested residential industrial area. The industrial comes from all trucks from Union City passing through our neighborhoods to access the highway. There are no lights planned for S Ts or Ravenswood, which would make left-hand turns impossible. Denial is the best answer. And then the last comment is from Ms. Pamela Harvey. Um, let's see. Okay. Uh, let me pull that one up. Oh, here we go. It's from Ms. Pamela Harvey. Not only would this development impact the five neighborhoods above by removing the tiny green space that separates them, but it would remove the air filters slash sound buffer provided by those trees. Red flags. Developer claims there are ten plus acres adjoining Morning Creek when Fulton County tax records list only nine. Developer claims project is point seven miles from quarry when in fact it is approximately a quarter mile from quarry to property line. The large amount of sub-surface rock on the property, a ravine, and dry creek beds with which reduce the amount of actual buildable land on the property and drainage problems are other red flags, which help explain why the multiple attempts over the last fifty years to develop it were problematic, and the reasons why they passed those problems on to someone else. Many of those reasons were given to city council in twenty-twenty-one, who recognized red flags and voted to deny the rezoning the property for townhomes by the same developer. The current quarry excav- excavation pit is closer to the southwest corner of the quarry than the mid-two thousands, when many residents of Sable Glen and the surrounding neighborhoods sued Vulcan materials for damaging their homes and respiratory health. Fulton County designated the area as a quarry impact zone, preventing any more residential to be built nearby to protect citizens' health and property. The citizens of South Fulton, the City of South Fulton's comprehensive plan outlines the quarry impact zone in the city zoning code three oh two point three, three five D states, no portion of a property proposed to be zoned to a residential zoning district should be located within one point four, five mile radius of the property lines of an existing active quarry. We should not go against our own code for one developer. It's clear in the old Fulton County Code and Comprehensive Plan and City of South Fulton Code and Comprehensive Plan that the new residential is not compatible. In this situation, an argument of the property owner that the government has taken his property rights would be incorrect. The city needs to show him that they have not taken his rights and tell him what development options he does have. This is ultimately a life, safety, and quality of life argument. This is what governments are supposed to protect. Last month, City of South Fulton Zoning Commission voted to deny this request. Hopefully, council will agree with staff to deny the change. That is the comments that I received.
All right, uh.
Mr. Mayor, the, the applicant has roughly about five, five minutes and fifty-two seconds left.
I was just going to say that, yeah, Mr. Deal, you do have five minutes.
Um, this is the applicant, William Deal. Respectfully, uh, we, we disagree. We believe that the zoning conditions that we propose will allow for uh significant uh development that will be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, that concludes my presentation. We ask that you approve with the conditions set forth by staff.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up now for questions from council. I will begin with um, if, if folks are in the queue, make sure that you switched over, or you can just raise your hands. I am going to begin, since this is in District Five, with Representative Mayor Proton Reeves.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Um, as stated, uh, we have um, uh, met and I do agree with all of the public comments as in our comprehensive plan and land use. This is not a project that's recommended to even be developed based on the words we wrote down in our comprehensive plan. But this is currently Zone R three. And R three allows for a certain number of home, single-family homes to be developed. But I question that as well because it requires a variance to even be rezoned to any category. I want to know where's the variance, because if it was historically designated as a rock quarry impact area and homes would not be able, how did it get to that R three designation? First of all, when we didn't meet, another condition was due to a previous example of public roads and going into a community. The ingress, egress areas coming out from Ravenswood and also STs to cut into those dead-end streets that another entry point was to be examined and looked at towards it could come in off of Rural eighty-five onto the subject property. I have yet to see that design. Uh, and also I've asked for the owner and attorney representing the owner to have a face-to-face community meeting with the residents who will be affected by this development. And they agreed, and that's supposed to take place so that everyone will have the opportunity to meet in person and see. The owner and their represent. An attorney representative. And hear them. In person because many people. Did not have the opportunity or just simply didn't I know. About. The meeting. As I stated, that the community is very opposed to any development. But I want to provide clarity. To everyone. And Mister Hull, can you provide that clarity? Under the current R three zoning. They can. I don't think that we can do anything about it, but how many homes? Can they construct? Under that particular zoning category?
Thank you for the question, council member. So if I recall, I was looking at the zoning districts, the minimum lot size for R three is eighteen thousand square feet. So based upon the size, um, and then the amenities that have been outlined. Um. The, you would consider, I think, the current. Minimum lot size is, I think, four thousand, so, um, it would be a substantial reduction. Um, as it relates to the question regarding the variance. Uh, a variance isn't needed if the applicant, well, a variance isn't needed because the applicant is requesting a change of zone. So that takes the place of having them to file for variance. Um, and so in this instance, the request is to, um, change the zone from R three to R five A. But, um, the minimum lot size for R three is approximately eighteen thousand square feet minimum lot size. So it would substantially reduce the number of units.
Okay, so for clarity. If they wanted to construct under this current zoning of R three. Is there anything that we, the City of South Fulton? Can do to prevent that from happening?
No, that would be, um, administratively approved. Because the zoning allows for housing as it is now with R three.
Even though our comp plan says. That there's no. Residential development warranted.
Right, well, it, it, I think it says between a quarter mile and a half a mile. You can't construct residential housing unless you have this report, this technical report. Or which is what we are requiring. So it doesn't say exclusively that you can. It says that you can't do it without having this report. And so. What the applicant is continuing is that at these various stages of the entitlement process. He will submit a report to the city engineer and only if that report suggests that the houses can be built. Um. Based upon these elements, um, shall this, shall the applicant move forward?
So even under the current. R three zoning. A structural or geotechnical report. Is necessary?
Yes.
So should they already have the report?
Um. They. Can, and I think in our last conversation, the applicant has started the preparation of that structural report. Uh, I'm not quite sure where the. The finality of the report is. But. That is, you know, even with the change of zone. They will still have to go through both the land disturbance permit as well as the building permit before they can even start construction. Assuming that the report supports that.
Correct, but the first step in either zoning. They need that report, that geotechnical report. So if that is the case. Whether they wanted to change it or whether they want to construct under the current zoning. They will still have the need and have to have and present that report to staff. So if that is the case, they, that first step should already be done so they would know what they can construct. So to me, that report should already be generated. Before they ask us to rezone and then generate the report. But. I will, um. Leave that to the subject matter experts and, uh. Will have the community meeting, well, affected. And hopefully they can present a report of that nature to the constituency. But, uh, that's all that I have. Thank you, Mister Hull.
My pleasure.
All right, next in the queue, I see Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, Mr. Hull, I have, uh, just a couple of questions. Um. Number one, what was the reason for the planning commission? Denying the project and. Number two, i- it seems as if clearly there's some contradiction between. Um, the residential zoning. And the quarry impact zone, what should be built or should not be built within that zone? Um, if you can. Speak to that as well because. Hearing some of the things that are coming out from residents in terms of the health and. Um, you know, this kind of thing, that's, you know, those things we really need to take. Seriously, not only for the, for the current, but also for the, um. Future residents. If we were to approve this thing.
Correct. Uh, related to the planning commission's reasoning, I think there were, um, individuals that spoke against the project. And obviously, um, anytime there's community opposition, that weighs heavily on any of the boards and commissions. Um, and then there were also expressed concerns about the potential environmental factors. That may come into play related to the proximity. Of the, um, development to the active quarry. The zoning, um, as was indicated by council member Reeves. The zoning has remained R three. And so, um, as you know, our comp plan had come later, but both the zoning ordinance and the comp plan. Recognize the locate, the proximity of the quarry. To what are existing residential homes and then vacant areas which could at some point. Be later developed. So to allow the flexibility and consideration of construction. The provision was put in specifically within a quarter to a half a mile, half a mile. To a mile or more. Um, that there be the structural integrity reports, geotechnical reports that are submitted. The timing of that was not included, so it's unclear if it's has to be before or after. Um, and it doesn't even talk about any considerations of a rezoning. It just simply says that it needs to be submitted to the city. And so. Our attempt is to kind of include these conditions so that the applicant will submit them.
That's a. That report. Um, is a structural report. That, um, that's about the building, right? Um, what about the environmental conditions, air quality and all of that stuff? I mean. It, that still should be considered. I mean, even though the building, the building stand and the people get sick, it's still, still a problem in my book.
So a part of the application for the rezoning, there is an environmental impact section that has to be completed. So that information is submitted at the time of the application. Um. In terms of looking at noise, air quality. Um, and in the instance of seismic, I think is what the technical name is, seismic activities. Uh, shaking of the buildings once they're constructed, things of that nature. Um, so that information is provided at the time of the application. Um, and then we, of course, can continue to ask as they're going through the process. To make sure that these environmental issues are addressed. And substantiated in the final report.
So the environmental report would come after the rezoning would have been approved?
No, the, the environmental section is a part of the application, so it was already submitted. But as we're going through the process and because they have to do. The structural or this engineering geo-technical report. Um, we can also request to get updates related to those other. Environmental factors, including air quality, noise and, uh, seismic. Activities. They've addressed it already, but we can ask for some additional discussion on that when they submit the other, the final report.
Okay.
All right, does that conclude your questions, Mister Sebastian?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Um. I, I. I won't say much here, Madam City Manager. I know that you are planning. Um, I believe that you may be planning a retreat. I do think that there is. A set of conversations that we need to have about, um. What we have inherited. From Fulton County. In terms of. Not only zoning and zoning classes, uh, and, uh. Mister Hull, you and I have talked about, you know, some of these classes that no longer exist, but. The land is still zoned that way, but also of just about, um. Um. Conditions and plaits and other things that we have inherited from the county. We, we. I don't know if we need to just do a, 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 a deep dive and overhaul or if these things may expire. Um. If there's a, if there's a statute of limitations on, on, on previous approvals, but. Uh, I, I would. Just like for us to. Take some time to, uh. Look at that in, in the future. I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And Mister Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is item number two. It's public hearing to consider U twenty two dash zero one two. The applicant, Henry Bailey Junior, is requesting a special use permit. For the expansion of a transfer station to an existing waste pro facility within the M two. Heavy industrial zoning district on forty one point eight five acres of land. The subject property is located at forty seven eighty five Fulton Industrial Boulevard and then is located in District One.
All right, I'm gonna go, uh. I'm sorry, uh, Mister Hull, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Members of council, Derek Hall reporting on behalf. Of this agenda item, U twenty two dash zero one two. The address of the property is forty seven eighty five Fulton Industrial Boulevard. This is an existing transfer station, uh, located in a heavy zoning district. Uh, the applicant is seeking, simply seeking to add. A recycling, some recycling, recycling equipment to the existing facility. To handle some more recyclable products at the actual location. So currently, the site is operated as a West Pro facility which handles recyclable materials. Uh, but they also handle, um, municipal solid waste. Uh, and then they're. Wanting to enhance the services by, uh, including, um, some additional. Recyclable activity at the site so that it'll be a part of the overall operation. Uh, the proposed location of where the new equipment is gonna go is already in an area that's either paved or developed. Um, and then, so we suspect that it won't be much. Um, in the way of land disturbance related to what's gonna go on. There will be some, but not much. Um, and again, as I mentioned, uh, this, it currently receives municipal solid waste. Which is then transported to a permanent landfill for disposal. Uh, the land use map, uh, indicates that this area is industrial zone. And then the future, the zoning district is heavy industrial. Again, this is an existing facility, so they'll just be adding some additional recycling equipment to the area. Uh, this is the aerial view of the project site. Located on Fulton Industrial, the northern part. For the benefit of this presentation. I have, uh, highlighted the area that is going to be added. So this is primarily the area, uh, highlighted in the circle. Uh, which will be added to the existing facility. Everything else remains. Um, and then there will be some equipment that'll be placed inside the existing structure. Uh, but it'll be contained inside the building. Um, there are also some, uh, additional. Underground utilities and stormwater management that'll be included as part of the project. Uh, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, but. Any expansion of an existing transfer station requires a special use permit, which is why we have the request for a use permit. Um, and then, as mentioned earlier, the equipment will be placed already in an area that's currently developed. So, uh, with that, uh, staff made the presentation to the planning commission. And staff and the planning commission, uh, recommended, uh. Approval, um. Of the project. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, I am going to open the public hearing, uh. Aside from the, the applicant, uh, do we have speakers for or against this item, Mister Clerk?
Mister Mayor, we did not receive any, uh, comments and support or in opposition to this application.
All right, well, we will go ahead and hear from the applicant if they are available. You have ten minutes.
Uh, good evening, Mister Mayor and, uh, council. My name is Henry Bailey. I am council for the applicant, Senator Brussel. I have members, representatives of the applicant team, uh, with me on the line tonight. Uh, and we are happy to take any questions, uh, that you all might have. Uh, first, I want to just thank, uh, Mister Hull for his presentation, uh, both here tonight and at Planning Commission and, uh, echo the sentiments of. Uh, the, the presentation made by, by Mister Hull. The request is simply to expand existing. Use of the transfer station at this facility of forty seven eighty five Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Um, this will, this will create a greener process and more fuel efficient process. Uh, that my client is proposing, uh, to expand the current use of the transfer station at, uh, the Waste Pro Facility. That's currently located on the site, um, uh, is the planning commission recommended unanimous approval. Uh, city staff recommended approval also, and I wish we were there in person tonight because. Uh, in that presentation at planning commission, we were able to. Provide some of what the materials, uh, the, the finished materials will look like after they came out of the transfer station. Um, to show you just, uh, how efficient and how, um. How beautifully they, i- i- it sort of cleaned some of the, some of the waste and, and it created a, a byproduct. Um, so with that, I, I'll yield my time and, and ask that you all support, uh, the, the, the application in the same fashion. That planning commission and city staff has supported the application. Uh, again, my client, uh, is here to answer any, uh, questions, specific detailed questions about the project if you should have.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open, um, up. Questions beginning with the District One Representative, Dr. Ralph.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. I have a, just a couple of questions. Can you talk about, uh, the green infrastructure that you're putting in place? What's in place to deal with air quality and have you done any studies to look at that? Can you speak to that? And, um, also can you share how long you've been at that current facility?
Sure. Chris, you wanted to speak to that?
Sure, and, and we also have, uh, our air permitting engineers on the call as well that can. You know, speak a little bit better about, uh, studies that have been done and the air quality at the facility. But the facility has been in operation for, uh, over fourteen years processing, um, just straight trash. They do have a recycling, uh, Murph up front of the building. But the facility that we're looking to co-locate at has been processing trash for the fourteen years. So we're looking to take that process. And clean that process up. Our process will take the trash, remove recycling and through the Brussel system. It actually cleans and pasteurizes the trash. That makes a homogenized feedstock that will then go into our anaerobic digester. To make renewable natural gas. So we're actually cleaning up the process that's been going on there for quite a long time. Cleaning up the air quality. And all the processes will actually be done inside of a building. So we'll have a series of air cleaners, air scrubbers and maintaining. Really good air quality in and around our. really good air quality in and around our processes. As well as then the fuel that we produce will be a clean burning fuel for trucks that will be hopefully running around Fulton County, picking up your city of Fulton. South Fulton, picking up trash, processing, recycling, and other, uh, transportation needs within the city of South Fulton. So providing a clean burning renewable energy that's created from the municipal solid waste is picked up in the facility that's going to be clean and, um, a, a very good air quality. But Catherine, you can speak to kind of the air permitting process.
Sure, yeah. Um, so to give some context, uh, my name is Catherine Meiser. Uh, I work for Trinity Consultants, which is a, we are a consulting firm that handles, um, a lot of air permitting here in, uh, in the state of Georgia. And so as far as this project specifically goes, um, we're gonna be applying for a minor source, um, air permit, which is, you know, the smallest permit that you can get in the state of Georgia. Um, the air emissions from the site are not anticipated to be anything super substantial. Um, they're, they're anticipated to be, um, below the major source permitting thresholds, uh, established by EPA and correspondingly, Georgia, Georgia EPD. Um, so, you know, the emissions from the site are expected to be relatively minor. Um, and then in, in addition to that, you know, you asked about specifically, you know, health impacts and any, um, you know, studies that are, that are gonna be completed. Uh, you know, as part of that minor source permit application, we're going to be completing, uh, what's called a toxic impact assessment, which basically um, evaluates all of the potential pollutants from the system and compares them to, you know, thresholds established by EPD and does a simplified model, um, essentially establishing whether, um, there will be any impacts to the surrounding areas as a result of the, uh, installation and operation of this equipment. Um, so that's kind of what the permitting pathway looks like at the moment, um, and sort of the, the studies that'll be done to, to prove that the impact to the surrounding community won't be, um, won't be substantial.
Uh, Catherine, for the sake of perspective, can you, can you give council an idea of the type of other uses that submit?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So, so a minor source permit, um, you know, it's, it's pretty broad sweeping. Um, it applies to most small, you know, operations in the state. Um, specifically, you know, to contextualize it a little bit, uh, most, you know, hospitals or schools, um, you know, have to have, uh, minor source permits. So it's not, there, it's the smallest, you know, tier, I guess, in terms of Georgia's air permitting. So, um, you know, relatively, relatively not impactful in comparison to a lot of other, um, you know, construction projects from an air permitting perspective.
Okay, um, and then just one other question. This is a, a question for staff. Uh, Mr. Hull, is it your department who is responsible for making Stuart is compliant with our, uh, transfer station ordinance?
Um, I'm not sure if it's my department or Public Works, but, you know, I work hand in hand with Public Works Director, so if not me, then him. If not him, then I don't really know that.
Okay. Well, um, I don't have, yeah, you can follow up later. Um, I don't have any, uh, additional questions. I defer to my colleague for additional questions.
Does anyone else have any questions? Comments? All right, um. I, I, I will close with this comment. I, I we did hear, I believe, a presentation about this a few months ago.
Yes, sir.
And I, I, I still don't understand it. Um, I am, uh, I am always reticent to agree to things that I don't fully understand. My, uh, I, I, I have, I have faith that, you know, this is, you know, going to be above board and, um, carried out as described. However, as we are currently dealing with a landfill fire in District Four and have been really struggling to get involvement from the EPD and or EPA in terms of regulating, I, I would like to have an EPD or EPA or both officials from those agencies come to our January twenty-fourth meeting where we would vote on this. And before voting, just explain to us what is their schedule for checking the air and checking the quality and making sure, because, because ultimately that, that's, that stuff is not going to be regulated, I don't think, by our city. And I, but I want to understand what is their, what is their schedule of, of checking and what is, what recourses are available should, um, there be some sort of uh, issue in the future. I just, you know, before we get started, I just want to understand how the regulation, um, happens. So I don't know, Madam City Manager or, or, or Dr. Ralph, do, could, could, Madam City Manager, can you commit to getting us an EPD or EPA official here to, to talk about the regulation of this, um, station?
Yes, sir. We, we can reach out to, um, invite them to see if they'd be willing to participate, uh, at that January twenty-fourth meeting.
All right, uh, thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and seeing no further questions or comments, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And, Mr. Clerk, you can sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, we're at the Council Comments for tonight's meeting.
All right, uh, we'll start, uh, with District One, Dr. Ralph.
Uh, wanna thank everybody who, um, participated in my, uh, holiday event. We were able to get a lot of toys donated for kids that we service during the holidays for the fire department. Um, special thanks to, um, I think I already addressed this. Thantown Community Association, who collected, um, um, hats and gloves for those families. And thank you, uh, Mayor, for coming out. Um, it was, it was a great experience, and we had a couple residents come out as well.
All right, District Two?
Good evening. Um, thank everyone for, uh, attending tonight's, um, meetings. They have been extremely long, but, uh, thank you all for hanging in there. Um, what's happening in District Two, of course, um, I don't think we were able to mention that we collected a lot of toys and were able to give them, uh, to kids in need in the community. Um, we partnered with our local business here, um, in the district, and they all, uh, gave so many toys. So we had an abundance of toys that we also made sure that we shared with some of the shelters in the surrounding area. Um, also too, we have a transportation town hall, um, that is coming up on January the eighteenth, which is this coming, I believe it is, Thursday, um, at Wool Creek Library at six-thirty, we will have, uh, GDOT officials along with the city officials to discuss um, and update, uh, residents on transportation projects that are happening in the district. Uh, we have a lot of things that are coming up for, uh, February as well, so we will share that as we, uh, get closer. But we had a successful, we've been cutting for the roundabout yesterday. I'm very excited. Excited was my word of the day for yesterday, um, and want to continue to keep up that same momentum with projects that should be happening throughout the city of South Fulton. So again, thank you all for participating and, um, continue to support the city of South Fulton. Have a good evening.
All right, District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
Um, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, I want to thank our honorable Fulton County Sheriff, uh, Patrick Labatt for allowing me to take, uh, twenty-five District Three, um, uh, finishing Strong Park students, uh, from Silo International, the Freedom Park area, shopping with a sheriff. Um, they really enjoyed themselves and, um, he spent a hundred dollars on every child that shop with the sheriff. So I appreciate you allowing me to load up a bus and take, uh, uh, the kids over to shop along with you. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Pastor Carter and, uh, Co-Pastor Carter for everything that they are doing to, uh, um, really pour into the Freedom Park children, which feed into Seavon Lee and Camp Creek Middle School, finishing learning part. You know, I got Comcast to, uh, invest in over three hundred thousand dollars to create this lift zone, and they are making, uh, miraculous, uh, impact in the students who I'm sorry. Did you all hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, um, that I want to thank the Silo International, I'm chock, Silo International Church for, um, all of their contributions towards, uh, Christmas toys and food insecurity for the Silo Church International Learning Pod, uh, and also Music Education Group. And I want to thank Ms. Linda, Councilmember Linda Pritchett, uh, for also donating toys uh, to the Silo Church International for Christmas. I want to thank the Gunner Foundation, um, of course Walmart canceled out on them, and they had over a thousand residents registered throughout Metro Atlanta and the city of South Fulton. And, uh, I was able to work with his foundation, um, and, um, get the gift cards to the needy, to the families in need. Um, that was amazing. And thank you, Chief Meadows, for working along with me and Mr. Tana Turner and the city manager for getting that, making sure that we got the families those gift cards. I also want to thank, um, Rapper Coat at Black for coming over to my District Three Community and Garden Park and, uh, making sure that that whole community was able to get, um, Christmas toys, leather coats, and electronics for Christmas. Uh, District Three Town Hall will be rolled out, um, series will be rolled out on February second and February sixteenth. We will, uh, share somewhat the same information, um, economic development information, and also, uh, sanitation, uh, updates. Uh, there will be one at Walkmore Park, and there will be one at my, um, uh, new, well, I'm a member of the church, but also it is now, as of January, in District Three, the Eden Baptist Church, where, uh, Pastor Pollard is the pastor. So I'm looking forward to hosting town hall meetings in those two locations. Uh, if I miss anyone for contributing, um, to the Christmas holiday events that I had um, in December, chalk it up to my head and not my heart. I really, really appreciate you all, because I had not planned to do anything for Christmas, but I could not, um, say no when I was called upon to make sure that families who are in need could be assisted, um, could be assist, uh, assisted. Uh, I want to give a huge thank you to the Good, to the Good at Foundation. Um, Jasmine Crow, you're just, um, amazing, and you do a lot throughout Metro Atlanta. Um, and you have worked in the city of South Fulton on several food insecurity projects. So it's good that you are able to make, um, a lot of things happen uh, for Christmas for a lot of residents, not only in the city of South Fulton, but throughout Metro Atlanta. Um, I am looking forward to twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we got a lot of projects underway, uh, for Public Works. We got a few economic development projects, and we have a lot of community outreach, uh, uh, projects planned. And I am ready, um, to make sure that we have a great twenty-twenty-three, a great twenty-twenty-three year. Thank you.
All right, District Four, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, everyone, for sticking around. I'm not gonna be too long. Just want to give, um, a reminder that we, this Saturday, will be celebrating our Langston Hughes, um, football six-eight champions with a parade starting at ten o'clock. Um, on Saturday, ten o'clock, behind the Waffle House on Highway ninety-two and proceeding up to the school, where there'll be some festivities that go on for a few hours. So if you can ma- make the parade, meet us at the school as well. Um, and again, big congratulations to the staff and the coaches and, of course, the, um, the students um, for Langston Hughes High School. Um, also want to give a, a, a shout out to just the community in District Four. I just completed my first year, um, a city council member. And, you know, taking a look back, uh, there were quite a number of things that we did together over um, the first year here, so I'm looking forward to doing, um, even more this year, the twenty-twenty-three. Um, some of our signature events are already on, on the calendar. If you don't get my newsletter, please, um, reach out. J C dot Sebastian at cityofsouthfultonGA, um, dot gov. Um, finally, for the folks that helped to pull off the first, um, District Four tree lighting, I know it was a wet evening, but, um, the folks who came out really, um, enjoyed themselves. And, um, you bet we're gonna have that on our calendar as well for next holiday season. Um, thank you, everyone. I just want to again thank staff for their help and their assistance throughout, um, the first year and even for your help in, um, trying to pull off this parade and recognition event, um, this coming Saturday. So, thank you, um, community for sticking with us and for, um, sticking with us throughout this meeting. Thank you.
All right, District Five, Councilman Williams.
Happy New Year to all, uh, and thank you all for, uh, joining, as y'all are truly the best part of the city of South Fulton. Um, and thank you to Representative Mandisha Thomas, uh, Trinity Fellowship Ministries, Pastor Reeves, and, uh, the Eden Ranch, uh, for hosting, uh, uh, Agri-Christmas, uh, for the youth. It was a, a great deal, a great turnout. Uh, thank you, Dr. Ralph, for stopping by. And, uh, if anybody has ever had a chance to get out to Eden Ranch, um, you should go check it out. It's a very nice venue. And also, um, and the New Year's twenty-twenty-three, and, uh, we must own it. And, uh, I'll just tell you that, uh, to the Estes, uh, community and to the Ravenwood Street community, particularly Sandra Simmons and Dee Clayborne for being involved in, uh, uh, our conversations and for Sandra and Rooted Affirmations, uh, who has a community garden and hydroponics and aquaponics. And, uh, I was allowed to go pick my vegetables and, uh, uh, clean them and eat them, and so the best greens I've ever had. And so, um, I look forward to, uh, that materializing and the things that's going to come good out of that for the greater good of the community. And as I'm sure Georgia is on your mind, uh, South Fulton, this city, we want to welcome all of y'all, and this is the place where you want to be. But it is up to us, it is up to us to surely make it a place where you want to come. And, uh, we want to have signs around the border saying, "Excellence lives here." And go exude that and remember that I love you, and you can do absolutely nothing about it. Continue to have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilman Reeves. Uh, District Six, Councilwoman Williams.
Nothing further.
Thank you. District Seven, Councilwoman Pritchett.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks again for coming out tonight, this evening. And, um, I am also grateful and thankful to the residents of District Seven who have overwhelmingly sent me here. Um, I want to thank, um, everyone that attended my, uh, swearing and ceremonies. I'd like to thank Councilwoman, uh, Willis and also thank Councilwoman William. Councilwoman Williams uh, for attending my ceremony at the Fulton County Courthouse. Um, I'd like to acknowledge um. Otis Nixon, uh, Atlanta Braves legend who also, also came out that day. Um, I'd also like to thank World Changers Church International that hosted our uh, swearing in as well. Um, I am very uh, excited to um, have attended. The uh, beginning of the legislative session that started yesterday at our Georgia Capitol. And um, being able to meet with Senator Donzella James, who is my senator. And um, really uh, grateful for all the work that she has done in our community over decades. And looking forward to uh, bringing her the concerns and the issues that we have in our district and our city. And working with her so that they can address those legislatively in the state. Um, I also like to announce that we um, will be having a community cleanup. On this Saturday at nine AM at the uh, the back of Oakley Township on Fayetteville Road in the back entrance. Um, with uh, everyone who just wants to make sure that we keep our communities clean. Um. Uh, also, I'm sorry, I have to also thank everyone that came out to our Christmas party. Um, to Councilwoman Willis, um, also would like to thank our retired NFL um, Raven. Evan Oglesby, who also donated lots of toys that I personally delivered to many families who reached out to me. That wanted gifts to be able to present their children um, that were in need. Uh, I also will be having a town hall meeting on January the twenty-third. At the Gladys S. Denard Library, also known as the Flat Shows Library. And uh, we will be having some presentations um, from the different departments in our city. And also talking to a lot of the um, residents about what issues and concerns that we have. Talking about our new districts. Um, oh, I also want to thank again, uh, Councilman. Our Mayor Pro Tim Corey Reeves and also our Mayor um, Kalikamu for coming out to my swearing in as well. At World Changers. So uh, thank you and look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Pritchett. Uh, first, I want to. Uh, some of this will be redundant, but I think it is important to repeat. I want to thank all of the nonprofit organizations and individuals. Uh, who helped us give to those less fortunate throughout this holiday season. With a special, special thanks to South Fulton Fire and Rescue. Who, after delivering uh, toys and, and spreading Christmas cheer. Uh, to those at our extended stay hotels, uh, when the pipes burst, they sprung into action. Collecting all of this water that we had sourced from different places. And making sure that it got into the hands of our constituents in need. So, thank you so much for that. Uh, as you all have heard, we have state champions. If you uh, follow First Dog Zion or Mr. Red, I saw the first look at the. Uh, signs that have gone up all around the city and. As uh, uh, as Councilman Sebastian has noted, we are having a parade. I do want to take a moment though and give uh, just a special shout out to all of our South Fulton County Schools. Uh, my alma mater Tri-Cities won, uh, not only uh, the Schullers, you know, for performing arts. But they are six-eight basketball champs. We have uh, track and uh, field champs at Westlake. We have champions at uh, Creekside, at Arlington Christian and, and at all of our schools. All of our students are incredibly amazing. Uh, the First Dog and I are coming out uh, this Saturday morning. Um, and while we're on the subject of football, I do want to uh, send thoughts and prayers to the family of DeMar Hamlin. I'm sure everyone um, knows about the injuries that he sustained. Uh, though he did. Uh, though he was released from the hospital yesterday, he and many other players. Uh, in the NFL still have a long way to go to making sure that they are compensated for the uh, sport. That they are a part of. I do believe that workers are entitled to all the wealth that they create. Um, I, I also want to just take a moment uh, and give prayers to the families of South Fulton. Who have children uh, playing in this sport. I was speaking with a friend of mine whose son actually plays at Westlake. They were watching this game together and uh, since then, they have been having some courageous conversations in their family. About uh, how his son is going to move forward in his athletic career. Speaking of courageous conversations, uh, I am back with the courageous conversations Town Hall. We are now live in person. Uh, we will be at uh, Southwest Art Center this month um, in partnership with Young Drew. Uh, we're going to be talking about the issue of gun violence, but also uh, sharing opportunities. For city of South Fulton youth um, to make money legitimately. And uh, have positive outlets for uh, their amazing energy and creativity. It's going to uh, open at five PM with a opportunity fair. So if you are listening and you have a nonprofit and you work with young people. Please make sure to reach out to uh, the mayor's office so that we can include you in this very important event. I have a mayor's brunch coming up. We did one on the south side on O-National. We're coming up here to uh, San Town Pub. You can text the word brunch to five five four 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 to RSVP. We want to make sure that we have enough food for everyone. Uh, that will be Saturday the twenty-first at twelve. And for all of our four-legged citizens, the First Dog Zion invites you again to his monthly. Uh, his monthly party. We're going to have a champagne New Year's toast. There are always free giveaways for dogs and. Training, free training for their owners. It is sponsored um, by Four Colors Mastino, which is an incredible group. Uh, that works uh, with animals here in the city of South Fulton. You heard this in our presentation, but I just wanted to make sure you see the flyer that is going to be uh, posted everywhere in the coming weeks. If you're behind on rent or mortgage, uh, we do have some help available on a first come, first served basis. Please make sure to visit the city of South Fulton G A dot gov. So that you can find out uh, how to apply. As always, you can contact me or the office of the public advocate. We are still doing Mayor Mondays uh, every, every week uh, that we can. So we hope to see you at a Mayor Monday soon. And as always, for all of this information, you can text the word Fulton to three three seven seven seven. To sign up for my newsletter and mobile alerts. Thank you all very much. And with that, Mister Clerk, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Uh, please call the.
Roll call vote to adjourn. Councilmember Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Goms?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM. Thank you.
Bye.
Well, so much. We will see you in person at the Southwest Art Center Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, South Fulton.
Have a good evening.